Hey, everyone.
Gentle.
Yeah. So, yeah, welcome, everyone, to our post-agenda on the Spin Scooter Pilot. Should I introduce the council members present? There's myself, Councilmember Kraus, Councilmember Coghill, Councilmember Strasburger. And then, do we have our guests come up to the table? And just to check, do we have Dr. Reck online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, super. We'll let you introduce yourself in a moment. So hello, everyone. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. I guess let's just go through and everyone introduce themselves to start.
Sure. My name is Jason Schaffner. I'm a general manager for Spin Scooters.
Kim Lucas, Director for the City's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Rylan Seifert, Policy Analyst with DOMI. Rylan Seifert, R-Y-L-A-N.
Jake Paulack, Deputy Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget.
Super. And then, online?
Daniel Reck, Federal, University of Zurich, Zelenka.
Okay, wow. Thank you, Dr. Reck. Are you in Zurich right now?
In Geneva. But close.
So it is my understanding that Director Lucas, you have a presentation?
Yes.
And Mr. Schaffner, do you also have a presentation?
Correct.
Okay. And then, Dr. Reck, and you have a presentation, correct?
So I was asked to prepare a presentation.
Okay, no, that's all right. Just to talk.
I can summarize the research I've done.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be fine.
And respond to questions.
Yeah, that'll be fine. Thanks. So why don't we do this? Why don't we have you all present, maybe take like five minutes or so each, and then, so do your presentation, then Dr. Reck can summarize his study, and then we can all ask questions. You know, we'll just go down the chain and ask questions from members. Sound good?
Sure.
Okay.
Would you like us to go first, the department?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So I will... So, good afternoon. Thanks for having us here today. I will go lightning-fast through this presentation. I wanted to make sure that we introduced the context that Spin Scooters is operating within, you know, how they ended up in the city of Pittsburgh, and how we've managed the program since they launched, and some of the results that we've seen in the ridership that it has achieved. So you all know, DOMI's mission is basically to get people around the city safely and efficiently. In Pittsburgh today, you may not know that 20% of our households do not have access to a private car. The map on the screen and in the presentation shows the gaps where households are not served by high-frequency transit. This is straight from Pittsburgh Regional Transit's website, and there has been an increase in fatal crashes involving pedestrians and cyclists. DOMI launched MovePGH, which is a mobility-as-a-service program, because we wanted to make sure that there were more options available to people to get around, especially without cars, because of the aforementioned safety concerns on our streets and the lack of access that many homes lack to automobiles. Spin Scooters was launched as part of MovePGH. Prior to launching MovePGH, DOMI conducted a number of public engagements, including over 25 community group meetings, information sessions, and we launched and engaged PGH page, which is still, I believe, up, soliciting feedback from members of the public. What that yielded was an operating permit and policy to govern Spin. So like every other mobility provider that uses our streets, minus Pittsburgh Regional Transit, they have a permit to operate. The city does not pay Spin to operate. There is not a contract. It's a permit, just like we have with Zipcar and Pogo Bike Share. As you can see on this slide, the operating permit and the operations policy, both of which are publicly available on DOMI's website, oversee and require different things from Spin, because we wanted to make sure that this program not only was safe, but that it was accessible, especially to those underserved communities. So we require a number of things, from distribution of the fleet, responsiveness to complaints about misparked or misused scooters, and other requirements, including the number of vehicles that they're allowed to have and other service provisions. For those who may be listening in, you have to be 18 years or older to ride scooters in Pittsburgh, and to use Spin specifically. We have another, we have a number of other safety requests of Spin riders. We want them to wear a helmet. They can't leave scooters on sidewalks where they are blocking other amenities or the sidewalk. And in certain parts of our city, we require that they be parked either in a corral or a designated parking station. All of these were to make sure that this program would serve as many people as possible and negatively impact as few people as possible by having a real regimented program. We mentioned that part of the reason we launched MovePGH is because we wanted to make sure that our communities who have experienced mobility and economic hardship had better access to mobility options. As you can see here, what's highlighted in yellow are the equity access zones that we worked with Spin to identify. If you unlock a scooter and you start a trip in any of those zones, even without registering for a special program, you unlock a 30% discount on your trip just by being in a place that the city has pre-identified as having experienced economic immobility hardship. If you do have the opportunity to register by demonstrating need, by financial need, by participation in other government programs, you can unlock an 80% discount, and we have nearly 400 people in the city of Pittsburgh that are registered for that 80% discount program today. And DOMI oversight. So as I mentioned, with the permit and the operations policy and plan, we have a lot of rules and requirements that we have put on Spin as an operator, and we manage them and we follow them. We do this through the data that's provided through a dashboard, which there's a screenshot in the presentation here. Help me make sure. Oh, good. Councilmember Wilson has one. Oh, you got one. We also perform random audits, where we actually go out. DOMI staff goes out. We walk our streets, and we document any issues we find. We report those issues, and then we document how long it takes for Spin to correct them. And those are done secret shopper-style, where we don't let Spin know in advance that we're doing it. So point being that there's a lot of rules on them, and DOMI manages that through various means. So in terms of trips, so Spin has been authorized to have up to 1,500 scooters on our streets. They operate, depending on the season, between 750 and 1,500 regularly. There have been almost a million trips on that thousand scooters. So almost a million times, people have been able to get from point A to point B in our city. We've seen over 200,000 unique individuals register to use those. So it's not that a million trips are being done by the same 10,000 people, 200,000 unique users. And just for reference, the population of the city of Pittsburgh is about 300,000. So that's a pretty good number of people that have found value in using this program. Half of the users of Spin don't have access to a car. So citywide, that percentage is 20%, but for Spin users who responded to a survey, 50% of them don't have access to a car. Nearly 30% of those folks also said that they're using Spin to get to transit, which is demonstrating that it is making connections for people who were perhaps underserved by being close to high-frequency transit. And for almost a third, over a third of those trips that were taken by scooter, for those folks who do have access to a car, they would have taken their car for that trip if they had not taken a scooter that day. When I hear that, as the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure, I hear that we've seen over 300,000 car trips taken out of our streets. That means less congestion, better air quality, and fewer chances of a safety incident involving especially a vulnerable user like a pedestrian. So how are people riding? They're using it for commuting. Nearly 50% of users are using it to get to work or to get to school. And, you know, of those folks, about 50% have reported that they make lower, less than 80% of the area median income. So people are using it to get where they need to go, and a lot of those folks are identifying as lower-income. So also, we heard from our survey data that folks using scooters are twice as likely to ride transit daily, that people of color are more likely to use scooters regularly, especially to connect to transit, and that 20% said they're actually using transit more now that they have access to a way to get to it with Spin Scooters. This is all important, because we want to make sure that people have access to their basic needs in our city, and mobility can be a barrier to all of those needs. By demographics, you can see that scooter riders do skew younger, 18 to 24 years old is the typical age, and racially, it skews more diverse than the standard Pittsburgh population. So we're seeing more racial diversity than the overall general population for our city. With that, I'm going to pass along to Rylan, who's going to talk a little bit about some of that oversight and compliance and the data behind what we've seen.
So as Director Lucas mentioned, that DOMI is constantly looking at the support requests and other incidents submitted to Spin to evaluate the program in ways that we can improve. So this here is the summary of support requests. These are things like improperly parked scooters, damaged scooters, or accidents. And these generally peak during high ridership seasons like the summer, but we've seen a consistent decline in those sorts of requests over the course of the pilot. And these, again, are user penalties. Spin has the ability to issue penalties, either warnings, fines, or even suspensions in a handful of cases for users that continue to repeat offenses, although 92% of users who receive a warning don't repeat those offenses in the future. And again, these sorts of things peak during high ridership seasons. And safety. Safety is always DOMI's number-one priority, and throughout the program, there have been no fatalities on Spin Scooters and only 37 reports of injuries. And this figure has also improved throughout the pilot with only three so far this year and no injuries in January. And as Director Lucas mentioned, DOMI has gone out and audited Spin on their parking compliances. This is looking at scooters that are parked on sidewalks or are parked at mobility hubs. We found about 2/3 of scooters are parked correctly, upright and in a legal parking space. And while about 1/3 of scooters were parked on the sidewalk, only three were parked in such a way that they obstructed clearances. Those other ones parked on the sidewalk are off to the side or at a bike rack.
So over the course of this program, which launched in July of 2021, there have been improvements made. Because of that data we've collected, because of that oversight that we've been performing, we have worked with Spin to identify improvements. One of them is the introduction of scooter license plates, so that it's easier for people to call in concerns about specific scooters, so that Spin and the city can follow up better. Streamlined coordination with 311. Till recently, Spin wasn't able to actually access 311 to close tickets, so they were responding to complaints, but they weren't getting credit for responding and for meeting their response requirements. We have since changed that. And then, the creation and maintenance of scooter parking corrals and increased messaging to Spin users via their app. We have opportunities for even greater improvement. I suspect that we will hear today that the number-one concerns about Spin have to do with scooters that are impeding access on our sidewalks, which is probably the number-one issue with any, with any, you know, independent mobility device. There is the potential to do a sidewalk detection pilot, where we can work using artificial intelligence technology to get cameras that would be just pointed down at the sidewalk so that the scooters have an automated way to know that they're on a sidewalk and to prevent users from leaving the device on a sidewalk. So that is a technology opportunity that we could pursue in our city, and that is being used in other cities to tamp down on that major concern that we share. And then finally, you know, we talk to people, we listen to people. That's why we've made improvements to the program and the operations and oversight. And we also listen when they have great things to say. So in the presentation, you can see that for some folks, this is filling a gap in our transit system, allowing people to do more trips without cars. They're convenient, they're fun, they help with hills, going up hills, you know, especially in cases where walking may be a little more challenging, and that they're giving people independence. So with that, I will cede the rest of my time, because I know I'm over it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Well, thanks for having me today. My name's Jason Schaffner from Spin Scooters. Appreciate everyone's time. There's really two primary topics that I'd like to touch on today, and that is rider education and our operations strategy here in Pittsburgh.
Real quick, sorry. Do you want to have your presentation shown, or are you comfortable just speaking through it, because I do have it on my computer?
Yeah, if we could bring it up, that'd be great.
Okay. So I'm going to share my screen again. All right, this one. Share.
Awesome. Thank you. Sure. So as I said, I'd like to touch on rider education and our operations strategy here in Pittsburgh. So at a high level, how to ride a scooter. For those of you who may not know, everything we do is powered through an app. You register for an account by downloading the Spin app on your phone, and then you add a payment method. If you're a first-time rider, if you've never ridden a scooter in Pittsburgh before, you have to take a short safety quiz and successfully pass that quiz before you're allowed to ride. You unlock the scooter by scanning a QR code on the handlebar, which you can see pictured here. At the end of your trip, when you're done riding, riders are required to submit a picture of your parked scooter. For riders that may not have a smartphone, you can unlock scooters through a text-based SMS system. And I've also got our pricing listed here. It's $1 to start a trip plus $0.39 a minute. We have our access zones throughout the city, which Director Lucas touched on. They're a 30% discount, and we have the even deeper discount through the Spin Access Program that's 80%. So touching on rider education, I think there's really three prongs whenever we think about rider education. There's education up front, there's ongoing messaging, and then there's communications after the trip and how we hold riders accountable, right? So speaking to that upfront education, as I mentioned, all riders must take a first-ride quiz the first time that they try to ride a scooter here in Pittsburgh. I have some screenshots here of some questions in that quiz, and all the questions need to be successfully answered before the scooter will unlock, or you can ride the scooter. And these rules aren't generic scooter rules. They're specific to Pittsburgh, photos of Pittsburgh, right? So it's uniquely tailored to our regulations here in the city of Pittsburgh. Speaking to ongoing messaging, we have these Pittsburgh Rules Screens, which are presented before every trip. So the first-ride quiz is just on your first trip on a scooter. These rules are presented every single trip you take, no matter how many trips you've taken. The purpose of this is just to remind riders of the rules of the road here in Pittsburgh, right? In addition to that, we also have regular in-app messaging that remind users to ride responsibly and park responsibly, which you see an example of here on the right. And lastly, there's the accountability piece. As I mentioned earlier, we require end-of-trip photos. So after you're done riding your scooter at the end of your trip, you must take a picture of that parked scooter. There's this pop-up message here that reminds users of where they're allowed to park. That would be in a parking corral, at a mobility hub, next to a bike rack, or otherwise legal on-street parking. And these parking photos are reviewed by Spin staff. So our team does look at these photos, and we're able to follow up if there is instances of improper parking. And that's what you see on the right side here. So if users do park incorrectly, we issue warnings to those users. It's a three-strike system, so if somebody were to have a second offense, it moves on to fines and then suspending riders' accounts. And for users that have received a warning, we see that 92% of those users do not go on to reoffend. So they recognize that they parked improperly, they learn from their mistakes, and it's not repeated behavior. Speaking to our operations strategy, so we work entirely with a team of W2 employees that are local to Pittsburgh. We are staffed 24/7. We have people on the ground right now, 24 hours a day. In peak season, we have over 40 employees working the streets of Pittsburgh around the clock. And yeah, they operate out of our local warehouse here. So what are these people doing? They're primarily proactively correcting parking issues. We're able to see scooter locations in real time on the map. So we drive around, we fix scooters. Whenever we get requests through 311 or through our internal customer support line, our drivers are immediately dispatched to go respond to those requests, relocate the scooters, what have you. We run three shifts per day. On average, each shift touches 600 scooters, so on a 1,500-scooter fleet, we're touching a lot of scooters every single day. Yeah, and while they're out and about, we're keeping up with the distribution compliance that DOMI alluded to earlier, bringing any damaged vehicles back to our central warehouse for repair. Touching on the fleet distribution component, we take a lot of strides to try to keep our scooter fleet evenly distributed around the entire city of Pittsburgh. This distribution is audited daily at 7:00 AM by DOMI. You can see here on this map, some different neighborhoods outlined. These are our access zones, where we have a 30% discount. On this map, the lighter yellow shades are areas of higher ridership. I think there's some trends that you would expect to see in any city, where denser urban areas such as downtown Oakland see a lot of ridership. But I think what's interesting to point out is the pockets of high ridership in these access zones, such as, you know, Hazelwood, West End, and so on, where we have these areas outside of the dense downtown areas that are high ridership because of the cheaper rates that we have in these areas. Thank you all my time. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. So, Dr. Reck?
So, if that's fine, I'll share a couple of slides from another presentation that I think summarized the research well and so on. Like you have something to look at as well?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So this first slide shows the areas of research that I've been active in over the couple of, over the last couple of years. So I've done about four years of research on shared mic mobility on different modes, such as shared e-scooters, shared e-bikes, but also car sharing. And I've especially focused on three areas of research. So the first one is the use of shared mic mobility. So how does shared mic mobility services differ? How does usage differ? And how do users choose between the different mic mobility options? The second one is on users of shared mic mobility. How do user groups differ? And are there any equity concerns? And the third area of research are the actions with other modes. So which modes do shared mic mobility services substitute, and what are their environmental implications? I've done, I've mostly focused my work on Switzerland and most specifically Zurich. So this we can discuss later, how big will the findings are on other areas. Here you see the main three papers that resulted so far out of my work. They're all open access, available online if you want to consult them later. So I'll start with a brief overview of my research on users of shared mic mobility. So for this first study, what we've done is we sent invitations to participate in a survey-based study to 17,000 inhabitants of the city of Zurich. So this is quite a large sample. The city of Zurich has around 400,000 inhabitants, and about 8% of those invited, randomly invited people participated. So we asked them a number of questions on person-specific social demographics, household-specific social demographics, and then also mobility-focused questions, such as knowledge of different shared mic mobility services, membership, and the use. So what we did then is we compared the different user groups of shared e-scooters, shared e-bikes, and shared dockless e-bikes with the latest Zurich census. So I'm just going to briefly mention the results with regards to shared e-scooter users and the difference to the latest census in Zurich. So here we see that shared dockless e-scooter users are on average younger, 33 years, versus the general population in Zurich of 41 years. There, on average, less females are represented in the user group of shared e-scooters. They are more highly educated, so there are more people with a university degree. A higher share is full-time employed, they have a higher household income. More shared e-scooter users live in households without children and without cars. So this is, these are the results with regards to users, and I'll continue with the interactions with other modes and the environmental impacts. So for this study, we sent invitations to 10,000 randomly selected people through the statistical office, and 540 people participated in the entire study. So what does this mean? They participated in the first survey, then they participated in three months of GPS tracking. So we used the app, which is displayed on the right here, to track their activity. The app automatically records activities and trips, and automatically then identifies the transport mode. To this dataset, we then added additional data sources that are usually relevant when analyzing mode choice, such as pin data, vehicle availability, and weather data. So during these three months, we collected over 65,000 trips from those 540 individuals. You can see the distribution here. And we then used the booking data that we also had for the same sample to further divide the e-bike trips into shared personal e-bike trips and the e-scooter trips into shared and personal e-scooter trips. We then applied a common statistical approach called mode choice modeling to this data to estimate which alternative transport modes would have been chosen if the shared transport modes were not available. So this then gives us the substitution patterns for the different transport modes, which I'm showing here. So again, I'll just focus on the right for e-scooters. So e-scooters, shared e-scooters in Zurich, on average, replace public transport in the, for the most part of all kilometers driven. So this is an important difference to most survey-led studies. Here we compare substitution rates on a per-kilometer basis, so not on a per-trip basis. Why per-kilometer basis? Because, of course, it's much more relevant when looking at CO2 emissions, how many kilometers of a car trip are being replaced than just a car trip, which can be very short or very long. So shared e-scooters replace public transport in 37% of all distances, the car in 21%, walking 20%, and the bike in 14% of all cases. So what we then did is we took the gross emissions. So these are the emissions the International Transport Forum, from the OECD, has calculated for each transport mode. So this assumes that walking emits zero grams CO2 per kilometer, public transport 72, the car on average 135, et cetera, and the shared e-scooter 106 grams CO2 per person kilometer. So we take those gross emissions, we then calculate the emissions of the substituted modes. So how is this calculated? We add 20% times zero plus 37% times 72, et cetera. And this results in the emissions of the shared, of the substituted modes, 62 grams CO2 per person kilometer. We then subtract that from the emissions of the mic mobility mode. In the case of shared e-scooters, this is 106 grams CO2 per person kilometer, and then in the end, get the net emission. So here we see that shared e-scooters in Zurich, on average, emit 42 grams CO2 per person kilometer more than the transport modes they replace. So this then leads us to the conclusion that for Zurich, shared e-scooters and e-bikes emit more CO2 than the transport modes they replace. So this suggests caution when using the phrase "sharing is caring for the environment" and/or when admitting and licensing shared mic mobility providers. And on the other hand, personal e-bikes and e-scooters emit less CO2 than the transport modes they replace, which suggests public subsidies for personal e-bikes and e-scooter sales. So this is just a brief overview of my research in this area. I'm looking forward to discussing it. Maybe one last comment on this. So this research was done in 2021. Since then, I'm sure several providers have improved their operations as lifetime, e-scooter lifetime, so kilometers driven in an e-scooter life, and the operations such as recharging, relocating, et cetera, are the most important ingredients to CO2 emissions in e-scooter operations. So it remains to be seen whether these values today are more favorable or not. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Great, thank you so much, Dr. Reck. Well, so lots of numbers, lots of numbers to sift through. I guess, I guess I'll just, I'll let members go down, we'll just go down the line. Oh, Director Paul, I'm sorry, did you? No, okay. So yeah, let members go. I, of course, have lots of questions, so I figure I'll have everyone go and then I can, you know, fill in the gaps.
Sure, thank you very much for being here and thank you for your enlightening presentations. You know, we, I think we were all here when we voted to first approve the pilot. And I think a number of us were probably leery about the actions that we were taking. You know, we sort of heard, you know, the sky will fall and this is probably not going to be a good thing and so forth and so on. But I'm pleasantly surprised to see over the last two years, right? We've been, these two years, that it really hasn't turned out kind of the way that we were told it was going to turn out. Yes, do we have some growing pains? In the beginning, certainly we did. Was there some behaviors that needed to be learned? Absolutely. Were there people that were misusing the platform? Absolutely, but I, well, not entirely, but broadly, turn that over to just sort of growing pains. I actually, and I'm a bit of a dinosaur, I confess that I am, I'm actually kind of pleasantly surprised that it has kind of turned the way that it has turned. Now, having said that, I represent Oakland, almost, you know, a super portion of Oakland and, and the South Side. So I have a very large demographic of constituency that use the, that use the platform. And I live on a grade, on 18th Street, many people know where I live, where I happen to get a bunch of scooters deposited because you can't kind of make the grade. And in the beginning, yeah, it was, it was annoying. I'm not going to lie and say that, that it wasn't. But through the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, the corrals that have been created throughout the city, one especially, specifically the intersection where I am, I see people more and more and more and more understanding the responsibilities that they have for the opportunity they've been given to make certain that they use it correctly, that they deposit it, you know, in a responsible manner, and don't leave them scattered throughout the, the streets. And I personally have noticed that and I'm actually very grateful for it. I really do like the ideas of the corrals that were created and we got a little bit of blowback from that in the beginning. You're taking parking away and those kinds of things. But again, I'm pleasantly surprised that they are being used. One thing I would say, Director, though, is the signage for them has not necessarily been successful. And I get that the signage was, you know, installed rather quickly and, and probably wasn't intended to, to last that long. But if we're going to commit to these, since we, I believe we're going to commit to these, I think we could do a little bit better identification of where the corrals are to make certain that we do encourage people to use them. And another thing I'm actually pleasantly surprised at is I don't see people just throwing them in there. I actually have begun to see people lining them up in orderly fashion, like as if to say, I have a responsibility here and I may be the person coming back to use this again and I want to make sure that it's, you know, in a, in a nice state, you know, for me to come back and use it. So even I surprise myself that I am as surprised that, you know, it didn't turn out the way a lot of, of naysayers would have said it was going to.
Could you move your?
Oh, I do this all the time, I'm sorry. So I am pleasantly surprised that it didn't turn out the way many people said that we would have, or that it would have. But with that, I do have a couple of questions since I've made my comments. Director, you talked about permitting within the city that Spin is permitted to use. Can you talk about some of the limitations that are contained? Some constituency might think, well, you, you have a permit, I can do this and I can do anything I want to. Well, that's not true. There's parameters, right? And so could you speak a little bit to the parameters of, of that permit?
Sure, so we, in that permit, and Ryland can correct me if I'm wrong, we have, and I'm going to my slide on it for my reference, that's where we are limiting the number of scooters that they're allowed to operate on our streets. That's where we have requirements, I believe, about the distribution of those scooters to make sure that they are being deployed at the quantities that they are required to in those zones that we've pre-identified as a city as being high need locations. And so we do have a lot of teeth within that permit. Domi issues 22,000 permits a year. So we have many folks that are using our public right of way and that this is the, the strongest mechanism we have for influencing how those folks use it. I can get you more information too on what's contained. I'm struggling to find the slide right now.
That's okay, you, you take the conversation exactly where I want to take it. I'm a very, if you talk to anybody that lives in the South Side and you ask them why they live there, the first response you're going to get 99.9% of the time is because I can walk anywhere. So I have always been a very big proponent of the public's right of way. It's called that for a reason. The public owns it and you can encroach under certain conditions and with certain permissions you can, but it is owned by the, the public. And so protecting that and guarding that has always been very, very important to me and kind of taken some blowback over the years for, for doing that. And in the beginning, I will confess, yes, to see people on sidewalks was incredibly annoying and dangerous, especially if someone has a set of headphones on, you're not paying attention, not thinking about what's coming behind you, somebody comes whizin' by you. I can honestly say I can't remember the last time that's happened. I mean, months and months and months and months and months and months and months that I've seen anything along those lines. I do get concerns from constituency about where scooters are left. Came up at Zone 3 Public Safety Council meeting just last month, we had a fulsome discussion about it. And through some research, I was pleasantly surprised to find that the calls that come into 311, which is the appropriate way to, to report that into 311, have a turnaround time of removing the scooter within one hour. That's the average. That's, with everything that we have on our plates to do on any given day, that's a pretty good turnaround time that I'm pleasantly surprised to hear. And then we also shared the, the number that is on every one of the scooters that, through the Zone 3 Public Safety Council, if you do have a scooter that has been misplaced, this is the number you can call. It'll immediately go into Spin, it'll go into 311, and the turnaround time is an hour. And if it doesn't, I want to know, you know, sort of our informer, informal data polling to see if that actually is indeed the case. But data indicates that that is, how that is actually happening. One other thing that you brought up, which I really thought was very interesting, is that there, there's a differentiation between the argument of one that uses a scooter as a means of transportation because they don't have an option other than that versus the one that does have an option but actually chooses to use the scooter. And I thought that was a really interesting dynamic, that even though one may have other options of transportation to choose, whether that be a personal vehicle or not or public transit, there are those cases where people are choosing a scooter over the available transportation. I thought that was pretty interesting. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure, so I think in our data, we said something like 35% of scooter trips were replacing car trips. So that's almost twice what it looked like Zurich had in their data for the number of car trips that were being replaced by their scooter program. That means those folks, those specific folks had a chance to take their car and they would have taken their car if they did not choose to take a scooter that day. That means 35% of those trips reduces the number of cars on our streets, which reduces the emission from those cars, reduces the potential for safety conflicts from those cars, and frees up parking, quite frankly, parking for people, especially in our congested areas. Other folks, having a scooter means that they can get where they need to go. You know, 50% of Spin survey respondents said they don't have access to a car. That's not a luxury that they have the option of. That's more than double the rate of people in the city of Pittsburgh that don't have access to a car. So what that means, how I interpret that data, is that we are overreaching to the people who need the most. We are actually, our statistic on car ownership and who's using this is actually way greater in terms of people who don't own cars than, than the city's data on that, which means we are serving those, those populations that are benefiting from it.
Yeah, there's not a day that goes by that I'm not asked, Councilman, what are you doing about parking? And my stock answer is reducing vehicles. It's really not about adding spaces, it's math, it's geography, there's only so much room in which we can park cars, right? So the answer to parking is not per se building more parking, but rather reducing vehicles. And, and what are the opportunities that we have to reduce vehicles, right? And what can we do? And is that bicycle, is that scooter? Yeah, did it take me some time to come around to that kind of thinking? Of course it did, you know, there's a learning curve to it. But I see the wisdom in it and the benefit to it. And it's, it's about, I think I read in, in one of the newspapers, an argument against too many choices, that we shouldn't have this many choices. And I thought that was just such an odd statement to make, that really we should be about providing as many choices as, as we possibly can. I don't pretend for a minute that you're ever going to see me on a scooter. And if you do, take a picture. You know, that's not going to happen. It's not my demographic. But at the same time, I'm, I'm sure there's not a member of council that has not heard the argument, what are we doing to keep young people in the city? This is clearly a demographic for younger, what did you say, under 24?
18 to 24.
Yeah, primarily that is, is going to use this. So i- i- in my authority as, as a member of council sitting here to, to, to make the argument for providing for reasons why young people choose to live in metropolitan areas, this certainly is one of them. It's not for me, I get that, I understand that, but it is for a different population and a different demographic that we want to attract. We want those people to, to come here and, and stay and choose to live here, so. And lastly, I'll, I really like the data around over a million trips that have been launched, but 30 plus 39, did you say, actual incidents of, of harm?
37 total reports of injury through the designated reporting systems.
But over a million trips.
Out of a million.
I'd love to know what that, you're good at that, Jake. Well, I don't know what that percentage is, but it's a micro percentage, I would.
Very, very small.
I was going to say, if you had pulled that off, I, I was going to be really surprised. But last but not least, I just lost my train of thought. There was one more thing I really wanted to say about them. But this, I thank the Councilwoman for bringing this up. It's, it's a overdue conversation. We have not revisited this since we had agreed to the platform to begin with. And I believe council's going to be taking a role into continuing the contract for a vote coming up very soon. So it's a timely conversation. I was really happy to be a part of it. I thank the Councilwoman for bringing it up and for you being here and, and I look forward to what other members have to say. Did you have something else, Director? You looked like, you're good.
Okay.
Councilman, it took me an extra minute to do the mental math. That's 0.37%.
He used his calculator.
Thank you, Director.
I, I also wanted to mention that Council President Smith is on the Zoom and Councilwoman Gross. Yeah, also, oh, sorry, and Councilman Wilson, yeah. Oh, yeah, we're, if you want to come on in. Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Coghill, take it away.
Madam Chair, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Welcome, I appreciate you all being here. Jason, welcome. Where you, you're not from Pittsburgh?
I'm local to the area.
Okay, okay. I'll tell you, I have mixed reactions about the scooters myself, but I just want to go through a few things, questions, I guess, to start with. Originally, the legislation called for a contract. And as I understand it, there is no contract between the city of Pittsburgh and Spin. It's a...
Correct, there's an operations permit.
An operations permit. What, can you explain to me what, what the difference is?
So a contract typically, we pay for a service and we procure it through those mechanisms. But since we're not paying for Spin to operate here, the model that was selected was one that followed the pre-existing models like Zipcar Car Share, at the time Scooby Moped Share was in the city, and, did we have one other service? Healthy Ride and now Pogo Bike Share. So we were following those, those parallel models.
Sure, okay. So being that we're not exchanging, money's not exchanged in hands, we don't feel we needed the need for a contract. But the contract originally called for a fiscal impact statement? Did we still get the fiscal impact statement?
If it's not, if there's not a contract, I don't know that we require those for permits because we're not paying into the program.
I can speak to that procedurally, not to, but, but I, I agree with what Director Lucas has said. When we issue permits to operate, those permits to operate require adherence to basic operating standards and mechanisms for ensuring adherence to those procedures. That's fundamentally different from a contract, which we typically enter into when funds or other assets or liabilities are, are, are being exchanged. And that's not the case in this engagement. The city doesn't fund Spin or its operations. Spin does not provide funding to the city as a result of its operations. They have a permit to operate within city limits and on, and on our streets. So, so the, the structure and form of their permit is consistent with other right-of-way permits that we issue, as Director Lucas has said, to other operators and also other types of folks who might occupy a portion of the right-of-way. So that, that would not typically come with a fiscal impact statement or, or legislation or anything of that nature. The, the specific permit, the, the having of the permit program, I believe, is legislatively authorized, but the permit itself would not.
Okay, and so no money is exchanged? We do not pay Spin? Spin doesn't pay us anything?
Correct.
Correct. Jason, can I ask you what your net profit is for the first year?
I don't know that I could speak to that per se, but this is an industry where breaking even is a goal.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So you're not profitable?
We're, we're, we're working toward that.
So your ridership's really good here, to your statistics, but you're not even profitable yet?
You know, I can't, I can't speak to numbers, but as a company, we're working toward that.
How do you get to profitable? More scooters?
Improved accessibility, more rides.
Okay. So we do use Domi to go out and inspect, audit, whatever, however you want to say. How many hours of man and woman power do we use for that, that we're not being compensated for, correct?
Correct, just like, you know, they pay a permit fee, just like PWSA pays a permit fee and that goes towards money to the city that then in turn goes towards staffing for Domi. So I can say that we are not performing daily audits, we are doing seasonal, I would say, audits to make sure that we are getting an eye on the street. And we're using really low-touch methods to monitor, for example, that daily check-in on a website. Nobody has to leave their office for that. So I would say it's less than half of a full-time employee that is, that is touching the program and probably even less than that.
So it's revenue neutral for us possibly? It doesn't cost us money?
I would say it is not costing us money.
When we add up the hours as to who's out there doing whatever.
Right.
Permit fees probably cover that. Is it safe to say?
Yes, and we're not using our typical inspectors. We're not pulling people off a construction inspection to do this work either. This is work that's able to be achieved by other types of staff within the department.
And that's all the work we have involved?
Yes.
Okay. Here's a question. If somebody gets on a scooter, starts down the road, we have a big pothole, person does a header, first of all, they're not required to wear a helmet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. They do head over heels, crack their head open and die. Who's being sued?
There are insurance requirements as part of the permit that Spin is required to have and that I think are even governed at the state level. Correct me if I'm wrong. So the state, which has authorized this pilot in Pittsburgh, has set that insurance coverage requirement.
Got it, so if the argument, Jason, is it's the city street is why that person suffered serious injuries or died, what does Spin do? Does Spin take responsibility still or does Spin say, no, you want to sue the city because their street's not properly maintained?
Right, so our users, whenever they sign up, our users assume liability for any personal injury that may occur, but.
Do they sign off on that?
Correct. As Director Lucas said, though, we do have insurance policy that covers things like this.
So if somebody goes in a pothole and it's not the scooter's fault, it's the street's fault, Spin's not going to say, well, you want to sue the city of Pittsburgh, not Spin. Spin's going to take responsibility.
As an operations manager, I don't know, it's my place to discuss, you know, the nuances of, you know, how, how a legal proceeding like that would play out, but yeah.
Councilman, if I may?
Sure.
Our, our liability risk in that situation would be identical to whether they owned the scooter themselves or they were riding a bicycle they owned themselves. It's not unique. It, we face it as a city, as someone who owns streets, paved streets and those streets occasionally have potholes in them. So I'm not discounting the, the risk that you're describing, I'm simply saying it would be present irrespective of who owned the vehicle they were on. It would, it would be, it would be the same across those, those cases.
Right, and luckily, we haven't had any major accidents. I'm surprised about that, to be honest with you. I just felt like somebody's going to be killed, honestly, in some of my streets at least, I don't, I don't, I'm speaking for the other districts, but we have windy, curvy, you know, blind roads. But, so nonetheless, there's a financial risk to the city of Pittsburgh that we can be sued, whether, you know, we don't, you can't eliminate. be sued, whether, you know, we don't, you can't eliminate that, that's...
Yes, but that's the risk of owning roads, not the risk of who's using them, right? I mean, we do, you are correct to say that the city has some liability risk from managing the right-of-way and the conditions of the right-of-way. But that's not directly, a driver of a personal vehicle that is damaged hitting that same pothole, we incur the same relative liability risk. So I take your point.
Yeah, we're still at risk. You know, I get it. We want to make, you know, transportation available in all shapes and forms. And, you know, if they're using it to get to work, and I read the article yesterday, I think it was in the Trib, it was very well done and kind of laid out who uses it and what form and fashion. But let me ask you this. So it costs you a dollar, just before you get on it, and thirty-nine cents a minute. So average ride, say, a mile and a half. How many minutes does it typically take for a scooter to go a mile and a half?
I mean, I think there's nuances to that, like street conditions, you know, stoplights, all that, in the same way that many other transportation may fluctuate. I can say our average trip is about three-quarters of a mile to a mile. It's generally less than ten minutes.
Less than ten minutes. So really, it's not, compared to public transportation, it's really the same. If you had a bus going by your place and a scooter at your access, it's probably a wash. I mean, I don't know what a PRT charges for, you know, a mile ride, but, so you're talking a dollar, you're talking probably four dollars or so if you're going a mile, mile and a half, you know? Which is not cheap. I mean, that's not, I always felt like, my initial thought was, oh, this is going to be a cheap, affordable way for transportation. But when you're looking at it, I mean, thirty-nine cents a minute, especially if, for my district, you can't take it downtown. I wish you could. I probably would be, feel differently about the transportation mode if I know we could travel from Brookline to downtown Pittsburgh. But geography, topography says you can't do it. So, okay, and now there's a thirty percent discount for which neighborhoods?
For the access zones that we've identified, so they're citywide. On, I don't have numbers on the pages, but you can see that we've got them in all quadrants of the city. And they were identified looking at Pittsburgh Regional Transit's Equity Index, which looks at rates of car ownership, access to transit, income and other demographic variables so that we could identify communities that experienced economic and mobility hardship.
Can you tell me offhand if Carrick is in that?
You're testing my geography of the city.
Is it yellow?
That is the yellow. And I will say that the thirty percent discount is automatic, but there is that additional program where if you qualify for government assistance, then you get an eighty percent discount on all of your trips regardless of where they're starting or ending.
Got it, got it. I'll just tell you a quick little story. I have a place in Mount Washington, coming home late night, four or five people milling around outside the house, quiet little street. And I see, like, there are scooters, there are five or six of them taking up about three parking spots, limited parking on this street. This is two-thirty in the morning. There were, no question, they were joyriding, you know? So I stopped them, you know, just out of curiosity. I said, hey, I said, what are you, where are you from? And they went on to tell us, hey, we come from, I think, Murraysville. And I was like, is that right? I said, you came here to ride the scooters? And they said, yes. They love coming here riding the scooters. So it is a part of a joyride. And I don't begrudge anybody that. I mean, if I rode one, it would be for joy not to get back and forth. However, they were in four different cars, four different people, taking up four different parking spots, but can put the, probably about fourteen parking spots on this street. Put the scooters in all separate parking spots, they didn't put them all together. So they, at one point, while they were there, they were taking up like ten or eight of those parking spots. And the neighbors were outraged. And I said, call Councilwoman Kell Smith, it's her district. But, you know, I wouldn't do that to her. So do you have a data as to how many people use it for joyrides? I mean, you could almost look at the times, I would think, right, as to when the ridership is?
So we have data, and there is more of this data, but I just have snippets of it here, that forty-four percent of trips are for commuting. So the rest of the trips are for not commuting. As you mentioned, there is a cost associated with riding scooters. So to the extent that people are going on extensive rides and not going to get somewhere, I suspect that's not happening too frequently because you pay for the time that you're on them. But there are some people that are using them for joy, just like some people cruise in their convertibles for joy, you know? And I'd rather a lower emitting, smaller vehicle for that.
Sure. And, you know, I'll sum it up like this. I think they're great, you know, especially, I believe, in Councilman Kraus's district. Maybe Councilwoman Strasberg's, it's students. I think the students use them, get back and forth, kind of have the right, they have bike lanes there, we're permitted to use these in the bike lanes, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's where they should be using them. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't have a bike lane in my entire district. I do not have a bike lane in my entire district, believe it or not. My district's not a fan of the scooters, I will tell you, simply because the main complaints are on sidewalks. Somebody comes by in a wheelchair and now he or she has to make a call and try to have the thing removed, or worse yet, they have to go into the street now and get around the scooter. Joyriding, people coming late night for those reasons. I do believe they're used in my district for, to get to the transportation, and I think that's a good thing. I personally would like to see in my district them stored at the local parks, they keep them off the streets. We have parks all over my district, small parks, and it's usually a short walk for them to get to that park and then go to, you know, whether it's the Edgbrook Station or a station up in Beachview. I think that's, I don't know if you have this data, but I'd say ninety percent of the people who use it, other than joyriding, use it to get to transportation. They certainly don't come downtown. They can't, it's just impossible. And as far as work locations go, I mean, very few people living in my district work on the other side of the district and would take a scooter to work. So I think they're really great in certain districts. I think they're great for a certain demographic. I think in my district, I would really prefer to see them consolidated, not on a street. I have one person, I will tell you, she, the only person I know in my district who takes the scooter from the bus stop on her way home every day. She gets a ride into work, gets dropped off in the bus, but not even a half a mile away from her home, and then she takes a scooter to her house. But what happens there, and what happened there, and this has been repeated, they have reported it, she takes a scooter home every day and then she gets a ride in the morning and she takes another, so five or six accumulate on this one block. And I get calls saying, how can all these scooters? So what, who regulates that? Do we have to, does somebody have to call? Does she have to say, hey, look, I've got three in front of my house now, you might want to come and get one or two? Or how do we regulate that?
So the concentration of scooters, there is no, I don't believe that there's an upper limit on the number of scooters that can be concentrated in any one location. We're more concerned about making sure that all communities have access to them. So the location of scooters, though, is actively monitored in our app that we have access to, our web portal that gets live-streamed data about the location of every single scooter at any moment. And then Spin is also actively monitoring because they need to make sure that their scooters are distributed. You know, they need to make sure if there's too many in one location, that means there's probably not enough in another location.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if you have any other operational notes on that?
Yeah, I'll just add to that, that an aspect of our permit is that it's quite an extensive permit, but one aspect of that is that scooters can't sit in the same location for more than five days. So we have automation set up on the backend to trigger and flag those vehicles to us. So, you know, like anything else, we operate according to the regulations of the city. So if some of those other conditions that Director Lucas mentioned aren't met, like we're not moving it for some other reason, once that five-day mark hits, we'll be sure to move it.
I will say, Jason, your response time to the people we have in the field has been very good. And they've been polite, they've been courteous. I've called ones who were in my yard one night. I move them and they start beeping, and they're not, they're not easy to move.
Yeah.
So, and I'm like, ah, this thing's beeping on me, I didn't know if I was going to be on camera. What if somebody picks one up and it's on a sidewalk and somebody moves it and throws it aside? There's no fines or you don't even know who that person is, right?
Generally not.
You know, though, from the data, that that scooter has been moved and it's now off the street.
Correct, right.
Not in a proper parking spot.
Yeah, and we'll go get that.
Do you know if somebody lays one in my yard? If...
So they have GPS, you know, if something is on the street or, you know, right off of the street, sometimes can be hard to tell. But like you mentioned, we've got a great team here. We're on the streets 24/7. These are Pittsburghers, these are people that live in these neighborhoods, right? So whenever they see something, they hop right to it and fix it.
Right. I will back you up on that. They've been polite, they've been nice, and they've been prompt in responding. My final thing is this, I'll say, because we do have a liability, we do. I mean, anytime we're riding on our street, that puts us at risk. I have used many of my hours in council district just responding to, just trying to figure out how to get them moved, where to get them moved to, what's the regulations behind them. That's hours, taxpayer dollars are paying me to be there. Jason, I hope you can become profitable. I do. And I hope when you're profitable, the city of Pittsburgh, we can go into contract and reap. I'm not looking to make money, I'm just looking to cover the cost that I put into it, that DOME puts into it, or whomever. I didn't realize that you weren't profitable. And I start thinking, what's it going to take to be profitable? Other than people riding them more, it's not going to be more scooters, though. Because we're limited to that. We, in the permit, there's a certain number of scooters that we allow.
Correct.
Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred is the max at this time.
Fifteen hundred, yeah, yeah. I would love to see how many I have in the fourth district as to compare across this, I'm not, I'm not making the argument for more by any means at this point, but just to, you have all that data?
We have all that data, in real time.
The data, and you have the data as to, like, how many people in fourth city council district use it for work versus where?
So there's survey data that may not get down to that level of detail, it's for the whole system. But we do, there's trip information, so we know where the trip patterns are all over the city. And that, in that user case you described, if someone taking it, now you think ninety percent of your residents are taking it to transit, that's absolutely what micro-mobility is for. It's for that first mile, last mile challenge, where if people are wanting to use transit, but they might just not be close enough to comfortably walk there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, again, I, I'm not against them at all, if it sounds that way. I do get headaches from them in my district. I don't think they're used as well as they are in other districts in my district. And, you know, whether it's the amount of scooters that go in my district or, you know, how they're stored and how they're serviced versus, you know, a district that I feel, I really do feel like Oakland and, you know, these areas where there's students that they probably use them a great deal, and I think they're a great benefit. So, okay, that's it from me. I appreciate you being here. Thanks for your time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Thanks, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thanks to everyone for being here. We're going to have to get you a bike lane.
Don't do me any favors.
Right.
We worked hard not to do that.
So it was hard to hear that.
I love the bike lanes, I do, but...
Hard to hear.
It is.
District four, right?
District four.
Well, I'm for it, I'm for it. All right, so I want to start from the beginning, from where I remember it in my head. There was state law that gave us some privilege to do this?
Yes, yes.
Did you already go over that?
Oh, I don't think I did.
Well, maybe I'll just say it real quick, maybe I'll get it right. So some legislators championed the state because, to allow scooters on the road, because currently scooters aren't allowed on our road or sidewalk, right?
Correct, statewide.
Yeah. If you own your own personal scooter.
Correct.
Yeah, so statewide, but we're granted that within the city of Pittsburgh.
For two years, correct?
Yeah. So that's our timeline, two years. And what's the likelihood of that being, I mean, are we currently lobbying to continue that?
It seems likely at the state level that scooters as an authorized mode of transportation will be authorized statewide later this year.
Okay.
They are learning from our pilots, we're in communication with them, but I would characterize the likelihood that it will happen as having more or less nothing to do with us specifically other than what was observed from that pilot.
Okay. All right, so you got that correct. And then, and then this permit is for how long? Is it an annual permit?
That's a great question. Ryland?
It will expire with the authorized legislation from the state. So when it expires this coming July, that permit will expire at the same time.
Okay, and then do we reauthorize that at council at that point? Like, I mean, I don't want to jump ahead, but is that, does that come back to council at that point?
At present, we don't know until the state acts legislatively whether scooters on streets will be legal come July, when the pilot ends, right? So...
But I mean, if it goes forward.
Assuming that they were authorized as a legal vehicle on the streets by the Commonwealth and then our permit were to expire, we would need a new, it would require a new permit. I am not sure off the top of my head whether the legislation that authorized the permitting structure would require reauthorization at that time. I suspect that it would because it would have been tied to the pilot.
Okay. All right, then I just want to pick through some of the, some of the data here. So how do you calculate commuting? It says forty-four percent were commuting. I see District One's a hotspot, especially with the new district coming into the strip in downtown. And I was curious, like, how do you calculate commuting?
So it's a survey response. So people were given an option to identify why they use scooters and commuting was a bubble and people selected it.
Okay. And trips less than a mile and whenever, because I wanted to ask the Dr. Rec about some of his data, and just to compare our data, so when we say estimated reduction of 100,000 tons of CO2 emissions, that means that we're not calculating the emissions that are happening somewhere else where the electricity is being made.
I believe so. I think we're probably comparing that distance if it had been taken by a car.
Okay.
By a non-electric vehicle.
And then this program that is eighty percent reduction in, in costs to the low-income residents? I don't have the page up.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I remember.
Yes.
How does one sign up for that?
Right, so if you otherwise qualify for some other existing government benefit, you can sign up on our website, call our customer support line, or we even do tabling events around town, farmers markets, things like that. We sign people up there. So what that equates to is fifty cents to start and seven cents a minute, that's a 20-minute trip for less than two bucks.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then I have some questions about the Dr. Rec's data. So can you hear me okay, Dr. Rec? Am I saying your, am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes, all good.
All right, so you went over the, I was interested in the table you had about the emissions and I was curious to know a little more about that. So I assume you're, you know, you're calculating all those emissions based off of, you know, where electricity would come from that's generating CO2 emissions?
So the life cycle assessments from the International Transport Forum, they take into account four vectors to calculate the emissions. First, the electricity consumption, as you said, taking into account, I think, the average energy mix in the country. Second, the vehicle manufacturing, divided by the total number of kilometers driven with Second, the vehicle manufacturing, divided by the total number of kilometers driven with that scooter during the entire lifetime. Third, infrastructure, wear and tear. And then fourth, the operational services. This typically includes rebalancing, recharging, et cetera. So trips undertaken often with large vehicles to do this, to do these operational services.
So, at the city, I believe I've seen before, I feel like this is, I'm just like trying to rehash my memory here, continuously through this questioning, so bear with me. I think there is some sort of partnership that we have with Duquesne Light, like, are we buying electricity from a certain source?
I can answer that one, but it doesn't necessarily answer this question. So the city of Pittsburgh, through a consortium that we're a member of that includes other major institutions in the region, is either buying our electricity from renewable sources, or we're buying them from non-renewable sources, also purchasing credits to offset the carbon output of those sources. So we, our electric consumption is, is net carbon neutral. But that, that applies to the city proper, the institution, this building, our rec centers, things like that.
So what about, what about the scooters, what they plug into?
Spin would have to answer how they purchase their electricity, but I, what, what you're thinking of is true, but it wouldn't necessarily apply to a private company.
All right, Spin, how do you, sorry, Spin.
It's Mr. Spin, actually.
Mr. Schaffner. Mr. Schaffner. Yeah, where do you purchase your electricity?
Duquesne Light Company.
Okay, and do you have any idea how they?
Not, not off the top of my head. I can't answer.
Okay, well, that'd be interesting to.
I'm sorry, I do have, I do have another insight on that. Not, not their purchasing, but it's generally accepted within, you know, folks who are focused on sustainability practices that even where the point source generation of electricity is currently using a fossil fuel, moving systems, like these systems, or like your home, like, you know, it's, it's better for the environment if you have an electric stove than a gas stove, or an electric furnace than a gas furnace. Because even if your energy generator is presently using natural gas to fuel it, from an infrastructure perspective, it will, it is and will be easier to eventually convert that centralized point of generation to a renewable source than it will be to make your gas stove run on electricity, because it can't, right? So the electrification of end uses has value for the environment, even if we're not yet quite there on some of the generation sources of the chain. So, so there's environmental, not, not.
I see you have an interest in this subject.
Environmental value, but electrification of as much as possible at the user end is valuable for the environment.
Okay, all right, thanks. The other topic I want to go towards was where, you know, the biggest complaint is, like, the scooter is blocking the sidewalk. So, I live at the top of a hill, I do see a scooter on the sidewalk that, you know, is, you know, would be the route to go up, like, the best route to go up the hill on the sidewalk. Sometimes it's blocking the sidewalk, sometimes it's not. My hunch is maybe someone just pushes it over at some point, because a lot of people walk down that, you know, something. But what I wanted to know is, is there any data that you have on where, where they are blocking the sidewalk? Like, are there repeat offenders, like areas that typically it continually happens? For instance, like on a hillside, because I know, you know, currently I'm over the weight limit to go up the hill all the way without having to, like, you know, stop it. Like, when I did use it one time, I was like, could I take this home? You know, could I take this to the street that I live on? And I, I couldn't, so I was like, well, I guess I'll have to place this in the middle of nowhere. You know, it wasn't like a, an urban area, well, I live in an urban area, but you get it. Like, it wasn't downtown, it wasn't the strip, like, it wasn't like where one of those hubs were. So, just curious, like, do you have data on where people were dumping them when they can't make it all the way up the hill? Like, is that a, is that a common cause?
Yeah, we, we have some limited data that's largely based off of reports that we get, but this is something that we hope to achieve a more granular view on as part of this AI sidewalk detection pilot that Director Lucas alluded to earlier. Part of that is just, just a lot of data collection and being able to see where the scooters are ending up on sidewalks, where they're being ridden on sidewalks. And I think that will really help us to pinpoint the problem areas, like, like you're alluding to, and try to tackle those operationally. If we know that certain neighborhoods, certain intersections, et cetera, are more problematic than others, then we can be a bit more proactive in trying to address those.
So if this continues, like, what would be the, how could you, you know, remedy these issues of that three percent of where it's obstructing a sidewalk? That's, you know.
So I can speak to that as the sort of regulating authority overseeing Spin and putting the requirements on them for how they, they operate their program. So I would say, when we have an idea of where there are more parking violations, we can implement more of those corrals and charging stations, so that there are more dedicated, easily identifiable places for people to park. In certain parts of our city, for example downtown, you must end your trip at one of those dedicated locations. And so when we have more information, and when there's a commitment for the program to be here longer than this two-year pilot, we can then look at having them make investments in those dedicated places, and ramping up their penalties as well for people who violate and who aren't following those rules.
Okay, and so what's the approximate time that you can get to a Spin scooter right now when it's obstructing a sidewalk? Like, if someone puts in a three-on-one?
We have drivers on the street twenty-four-seven, they respond the moment it's dispatched. So, under an hour generally.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, I just wanted to see if Council President had questions, because she is on. Maybe she, she maybe will jump back online if she has questions, so, Councilwoman Strasburg? Oh, just quickly too, I just, sorry, I just want to say, this is, so, we have, the public hearing was scheduled for 2:30. I guess I should have allotted a longer time for this, but I, I appreciate everyone here being able to hear this, and I hope that, you know, and apologies if anybody can't make it, or has to leave for, for whatever reason, but you can submit written comment. But I do appreciate everyone patiently, but I think it's important to have both, right? So, at any rate, yeah.
Thank you. I'll, I'll work to be brief, and thank you all for being here. I'll jump right in, in the, in the interest of time. Well, first I'll just precede that by saying, I never want to limit the number of types of options that we have, transit options that we have, that, you know, I do see an issue with the potential of this state law opening up a can of worms of many different types of scooter companies coming to town. I know that was initially a concern, and we've been able to get beyond that for this. I don't know if that remains a concern, if state law goes into effect allowing scooters on every street. Is that the case, or is that?
Do you mean by having multiple companies?
Multiple companies. So when I say options, I like options, I like different types of options, but I would be concerned about multiple companies.
You're right, I agree.
Flooding the market.
That, and speaking from personal experience managing programs like this in other cities where there were multiple vendors, that having one vendor can be very beneficial, not only for the, the entity providing, providing oversight, but also for the user to not have to have five different apps to try to get on one type of device. So, we don't know what that final state legislation will or will not allow, so there's definitely always a risk for something like that.
I think that's the value of us having a permitting, structuring this as a permitting process. That's not to say, Director Lucas is correct. State, we don't know whether state law would say you can have one, or you must have multiple, or you, where that line might be drawn. But structuring it through a permits means that whether it's one or several providers that state law authorizes, we can provide consistent requirements and oversight to whomever is operating and whoever is eligible for a permit. But as compared to sort of a completely open process without permit requirements, which probably invites the worst-case scenario you're thinking about. The fact that we've pursued this as a permit that allows us to have a productive working relationship with a provider is valuable.
So that said, you know, I think if there, if, if there were multiple options of different modes of transit, and there was no friction, there was no issue with any one, you know, population, we might not be here today, right? So there's clearly, what I don't love to see is that there's, it, it causes tremendous challenges for, for certain people, for certain people who move throughout the city. And so when we're talking about parking, and we're talking about, you know, parking violations in particular on sidewalks, right? If you're traveling by wheelchair, or if you are traveling with a visual impairment, and, you know, you're just not able to, it, it's just really impacting your life in a significant way. To me, that's, you know, that almost counts for more than just a parking violation. That's, that's really impacting someone's life in a, in a tremendous way. And so, I look at the numbers, I look at the statistics around that, and I think, it looks pretty good. I also, just from the personal experience, I suspect that not everyone is reporting, and so we're not capturing the number that are blocking the sidewalk that is actually present. And I don't want to, again, I don't want to, I'm not, like everyone else, I don't want to necessarily stop this program, but I do want to figure out ways that we can continue to proactively enforce, so that we're improving that. Is it, and, you know, I think this, this sidewalk enforcement pilot is promising, and is there also a low-tech way that we can improve? Is it partnering with our new downtown ambassadors? Is it partnering with Pitt's new student Oakland ambassadors? Is it partnering with, you know, university public safety? I also hear that, like, riding on sidewalks through campuses is a, is a problem, and that's, you know, making students feel unsafe as they're walking through campuses. What more can we do that's low-tech, that doesn't, you know? I don't want to over-penalize over police, of course, but utilizing the people who are eyes on the street anyway, empowering other people in, in business districts, or in places where, you know, ridership is, is higher, like the district I represent, to, yeah, to pick up, you know, even if it's going to beep, to pick up that scooter off the sidewalk and move it to the street, or whatever it might be. Just so, even if we're not, like, not everyone is going to stop and report it. The reporting's easy, and that they're just getting moved off the sidewalk, right? Because that's the goal for everybody.
You're right. So in the perfect, in the perfect sort of balanced scenario, people would have really great places to ride, so great infrastructure in the roadway that they feel safe using, and there would be ample dedicated parking spaces that are easily identified, so that people are using them, and that they're in the right locations where people need them. I am confident that as the program continues to evolve, and as our department's work continues to expand, and we have our complete streets projects, that we will be addressing a lot of those issues, not by dedicating resources into this program, but just by doing the work that we are doing to make our streets safer for people on wheels. I think that's a great idea about partnering with the, with these ambassadors for specific communities, because you're right, places that have the highest and most densest populations, therefore more scooter trips, therefore more issues with scooters, are probably also places that have these other resources that we can collaborate with.
I think we've exhausted our, our time, or come close to that, so I will leave my questions at that.
Yeah, so I am going to recess, so just quickly, so we, we do need to, this has gone longer than I anticipated, so we'll need to recess. Yeah, but just quickly, I do want to say, because I, I want to come back to this, so, because I obviously have lots. But, but one thing, just in general, just in terms of the numbers, there was a new study released, the numbers are drastically different between the very recent study and the study that was released this past October, which is odd, because the scooter usage has gone down, but the numbers have drastically improved for commuter trips. And just in terms of this survey methodology, and again, we will come back, because I have some detailed questions about the numbers and the cost, and the percentage of users actually using this access program, et cetera. Because there's numbers, and then there's numbers, right? But what I do want to say is that when you base, so Domi as the, as the auditor of this program, right? When we do reports about a program, and we use surveys by the people that use that program as the basis for our report on the program, it's, it's problematic, right? It's sort of like, you know, eighty percent of dog lovers love dog, you know, think dogs are great, but if you don't ask the cat lovers, et cetera. I, yeah, I understand. So, at any rate, so I will recess, and we will, and I, I very much hope, since, since the, the reports include, you know, are really focused on the Spin users, and did not actually seem like they surveyed anybody other than Spin users, I very much hope that you all will stay for the public hearing to hear, because we've already gotten many, many comments in, and obviously there's lots of folks here that would like to speak. So I'm going to recess, thank you.
Motion to recess to begin the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing for Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. We are here to hear from the public about the Spin scooter pilot. Oh, I'm sorry, so will the clerk please read, read the subject of the hearing?
Today's public hearing is on the Spin e-scooter pilot program.
Okay, for the record, we are joined today by myself, Councilmembers Kraus, Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Strasburger, Councilmember Gross, and... Is that, is there anyone online? Okay, great. All right, so we'll now move on to testimony from registered speakers. Once you're called upon, please, please give your full name and neighborhood for the public record. Each speaker will have three minutes to address council. Please keep in mind that this is an opportunity for the community to speak directly to Pittsburgh Council about the issue at hand, and a time for council to listen. Therefore, council will not be responding to individual comments. Our first speaker is Poma Chokmam Yahalahi. Online? Okay, well, there's a lot of us, so we'll come back. So our next registered speaker, if she, if she's back, we'll, we'll come back to her. Our next registered speaker is Laura Chu Weens.
Good afternoon, my name is Laura Chu Weens. I'm the Executive Director of Pittsburgh's Republic Transit. I live in Point Breeze Park Place. We believe that mobility is a right and not a privilege, and that our city should be acting on behalf of communities, not companies, and our collective needs for clean air, for transportation, and safe streets. What does success look like for the city for this scooter pilot, and how is it measured? What does failure look like, and what happens when harms outweigh the good? If the goal of this pilot is to reduce transportation emissions, then the city should rigorously assess whether that goal is in fact met. When twice as many lower emissions trips of walking, biking transit, that's sixty-seven percent of rides, are being replaced by scooters over car trips, which account for thirty-three percent of scooter rides. Researchers like the one who spoke during the post-agenda have done a literature review finding that shared e-scooters program generate more emissions than the forms they replace. To be clear, Spin scooters generate emissions from charging, and because diesel vans are outplacing and rebalancing them, and significant lifecycle environmental costs that we're not even talking about. In any case, it doesn't seem like Pittsburgh is a significant outlier to this trend. An increase in scooter trips doesn't mean that scooters have replaced car trips. It's likely that they have incentivized new non-essential trips, which would lead to increased congestion, more sidewalk hazards, and more emissions. And this is a reasonable assumption, given that thirty percent of users have ridden for recreation, which is joyriding. The Spin survey had separate categories for other non-essential trips, so visiting friends, forty-four point nine percent, and dining out, twenty-three point, twenty-three percent. So the use of scooters and ridership on the scooters is not a valuable end in itself for anybody except for the private venture capital-backed, non-profitable company. If the point of the scooters is to provide underserved populations with mobility options, then the city should start by assessing who in particular this form of transportation can serve. Domi should be clear about what populations and what problems the technology is going to fix, and assess whether it's working. We know that students traveling largely on weekend nights and on weekend, or weekday nights and weekends on key corridors of Oakland, downtown, and Lawrenceville are predominantly using the service to meet friends, dine out, or joyride. The student population owns fewer cars, is lower income, and is more diverse than the city as a whole. So we should look at, to understand the data, we should be clear about what percentage of students are the no-car household data, low-income households, and minority population that they're talking about. And what we'd find is that it's primarily a transportation solution for students going out recreationally in transportation-rich corridors, and twenty percent of the Spin survey respondents were non-Pittsburgers. So are these the transportation problems we needed the city to solve? And should this be the city's most touted transportation initiative? As a note, Spin and the city couldn't give away free access to the scooters in the low-income pilot, universal basic mobility pilot in Manchester. They couldn't find participants for the program until a year and a half into the start date, and only then because low-income people were looking for accessing free bus passes. This is not work that PPT should have to request and analyze, this is what the city should be doing. It is dismaying that Domi is completely indistinguishable from Spin in this conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bonnie Fan.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Fan. I am a former data scientist at Chicago Transit Authority and former Traffic Twenty-One fellow. Just wanted to speak a little bit on the claim that scooters address a last-mile transportation problem. Transportation policy consultant and author of Human Transit, Jared Walker, wrote about this in Technology Never Changes Geometry, where he says that, "In dense cities where big transit vehicles are carrying significant ridership, any small vehicles replacing big vehicle solution increases the total number of vehicles on the road at any time." Let's say technology solves the problems of increased emissions, increased road carnage, that does not solve the issue of geometry. There's always the problem of space. Increasing the number of vehicles on the road means that you're more, taking more space to move the same number of people. This may be fine in low-density rural areas, but in a city where there's little space per person, efficient use of space is the core problem of transportation. Technology never changes geometry, and you must solve a problem spatially before you've really solved it. In Pittsburgh, where cars park regularly on the road, on the sidewalk, construction signs litter the sidewalk, and roads are unsafe for bikers. and roads are unsafe for bikers. Sidewalk space is already a scarce and precious public resource. By sheer business model, micro mobility companies like Spin scooters rely on littering the high vol, a high volume of vehicles across the city. Pittsburgh already has limited sidewalk space and that, and that continues to shrink with Spin scooters operating. The idea that scooters are solving the last mile problem is in fact a Band-Aid at best. It shows that low income and people of color can't afford in Pittsburgh to live in a, in transit-rich neighborhoods, which is a policy problem that the city could solve at its root with affordable housing and transit equitable land use plan, planning. What's more is that scooters are inaccessible to those with mobility impairments. According to the latest census, about 44,000 Pittsburgers have a disability, about 15% of the city. This is so, this so-called last mile transportation solution excluded those who most needed mobility access while simultaneously increasing inaccessibility on our already limited sidewalks for those same people. That goes beyond inequitable to discriminatory, discriminatory. Rather than the city making closed door deals with private companies to private off of public space with ableist solutions, we should ask for real mobility solutions for equitable transit-friendly, walkable infrastructure with affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Amy Zass. Did I say that correctly?
Thank you. My name's Amy Zace. I live in Beachview. Um, I'm just going to wing it. Uh, I want to talk for a moment about my experience living in Oakland, California for, I lived there for about eight years. Um, I think it was 2018, the city allowed their first scooter pilot. Um, very quickly, there were three different companies operating in the city, scooters everywhere. People would throw them into the lake, leave them everywhere. Um, I think 2020, the city changed the rules, required that scooters be locked to a bike rack. The city also installed additional bike racks. Seems like a pretty straightforward solution to me. Um, let's see, I was also just in Washington DC for a few days. Um, got back on Monday. Uh, there, the scooters are all locked to bike racks. They're out of the way. There's beautiful bike lanes everywhere. Um, I think this has all been said before, but, um, I just, I'm not against scooters. I just, uh, I think leaving them on the sidewalk is a real issue that needs to be addressed. Um, also, I think like has been touched on, uh, Spin is not a profitable company. Uh, thinking about my time in Oakland, California, Uber and Lyft were seen as a great solution to bridge the gap in, in last mile connections. Guess what? They're still not profitable. They keep jacking up prices. I don't have an MBA. I've been a business manager for like 10 years now. I don't know how you make a profitable work, a company more profitable by simply growing users. They're going to raise prices. So first there's the issue, people become reliant on these. What happens when either Spin goes out of business? Everything disappears or they raise prices on everyone. Um, I think these are issues that need to be considered and, and with thoughtful approach if the pilot is to continue.
All right, that's it. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next up, Alyssa Greshman.
Who else is with Spin? Oh, I got scared. I'm going to run this thing over. There, that's not a good idea. Oh my God! I'm sorry. I had, forgot I had the thing sideways. My chair is broken and it is causing me some grief. And I get this closer. There we go. I'm so sorry about that. Like I said, my chair is broken.
You're fine. No worries.
So.
Take your time.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Greshman. I live in Uptown. Good to see my councilman's not here. Ableist, noun. Discrimination in favor of able-bodied people. See also attitudes behind bringing in gimmicks like eScooters rather than addressing basic inequities in public accommodations. I've started this off by handing out the same photos of Spin scooters being left in the middle of curb cuts and lying on their sides blocking public rights away that I've handed out at several previous hearings. By the way, 24-hour people driving around, the third of those five photos was there for almost a week. Uh, and somehow we're here again saying the same exact things about how this program further disenfranchises already marginalized groups of people, which begs the question, is anyone actually listening? It's time to find out. So I guess you're not allowed to comment. I was hoping to cede the rest of my kind of time for city council to comment. At least, let's get a show of hands. Who actually thinks they can justify this level of discrimination? Because that's a lot of what I've been hearing so far. Uh, why do you think it's okay to continue such a discriminatory program that leaves out people like me? That leaves out, you know, the people who most need this last mile gap? Three of those five photos were taken within 500 feet of my front door. So I just, I want to hear from you guys. You know, I love the smug looks, but like, seriously, what, what is it that makes you go, well, I guess we're still okay with excluding an entire population of people? I have to go in the street, which is super, super not safe. I'm already dealing with cars parked in front of bus stops. Now I've got this eScooters parked in front of bus stops. You know, that is a civil rights violation. I have reported these. And in fact, I only reported them recently because I didn't know you could report them. Most people don't know. I've got better things to do with my time than report every single time I've seen a scooter on the sidewalk, which Oakland is terrible. I've gotten hit twice. So again, I, I'd be really curious to hear what the justification is to continue this program. You know, to my face, you know, my disabled face. Anyone? That's what I thought.
Thank you. Uh, just to clarify, we, the members will be able to comment at the end. We do, we, we wait till the end and then we'll have statements, so. Um, okay, so our next speaker is Gabriel McMorland.
Hello. Hi, uh, I'm Gabriel McMorland. And I currently live in Mount Washington. And I am a blind trans woman. So I'm one of the most vulnerable users of the outdoor world in the city. And I know it's awfully inconvenient for some people that I exist and have needs, but, um, I also have an urban studies degree and I've worked in urban planning. And I was previously on the city-county disability task force. And on the way into this building today, a man in his car almost hit me in the crosswalk when I had the right to cross and then yelled at me and said, "What are you doing? Get out of the road." So I got out of the road because I was scared of him. And he said, "You need to look both ways where you're going." And I have this cane and it's daylight. It's actually more insulting and sort of professionally disturbing to have watched for more than a year now, DOMI essentially function as the PR wang of Spin. I've read the report too. I certainly have respect for their intellectual abilities and I'm really questioning, uh, that they're not functioning as a, uh, sort of dispassionate third party. The city needs to have a mobility plan that starts from prioritizing the people who have the greatest needs. I also want to point out that, so I identify as someone with a disability. In fact, I'm pretty sure that some people at this point stop listening when I show up because they're like, here she is again complaining with her special interest complaints. But, um, we're one of the oldest populations in the country here in this city. A lot of our seniors are not going to identify as having a disability, but they have one. Obviously, a lot of people, including just people over 220 pounds, have a bad knee, balance issues, not especially athletic or adventurous, can't ride the scooters. Well, I can't ride a bicycle either. And when I could see, it was the first time I ever felt free. So I wish I could. I can't. I'm not here to complain about the bike program, bike share program, because I don't see people riding those bikes drunk down the middle of the sidewalk. I, they go back in the corrals and they're a nonprofit. So everything is different. Then I want to just emphasize a couple of points here because, um, I think it's helpful to share my own experience. So one thing is obviously it causes problems when they're abandoned in the road. Am I supposed to wait there for two hours? Also, when I am at least physically able to move them out of the road? It's just a physics leverage thing. If you're sitting in a wheelchair, you can't really move them out of the way yourself. Um, at least not most people I've met. And that's also true for friends of mine that have, use a cane or, uh, sorry, what's going on? Oh, is that my time?
Yeah, that's your time.
Oh, sorry. I just want to add one last thing. I know I'm over time. There's not a lot that says easy target, come get me, than watching a blind trans girl stumble around two abandoned scooters on a broken sidewalk in the rain. So I don't know if I'm going to get hit by a car or caught up in some kind of hate crime, but urban design is really the thing that's going to keep me safe. And right now, I'm clearly not a priority. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Gabriel. All right. Um, our next speaker is Joy Door. Is she online? I don't see her here. No, okay. I'll, I'll put, in case she comes back. I'm circling those. Okay, uh, our next speaker is Amin Rahimian. Amin? Online? No? Okay. Our next speaker, and I'm circling these. We'll come back if they happen to come back. Uh, next is Jessica Vinskis. Jessica? No? Okay. Our next speaker is James Dehr. D U E H R? No? Not online? Okay. Our next speaker is Scott Bricker.
Hi, everyone. It's Scott Bricker, East Liberty. I'm the executive director of Bike Pittsburgh. Uh, we're a 3,000-member strong nonprofit whose mission is transforming our streets to make biking and walking commonplace for Pittsburgh, to improve our quality of life and reduce car dependency in our communities. In recent years, we have seen a proliferation of e-mobility devices hit streets throughout the world. And we realize that these mobility devices serve a purpose in addressing the latter part of our mission, reducing car dependency. In the spirit of transparency, I have used an eScooter on two occasions, one of which was a Spin. And Bike Pittsburgh once received a small sponsorship from Spin in support of open streets. We were cautiously optimistic about introducing eScooters into the mix in Pittsburgh. Setting this up as a pilot in a state where eScooters are still illegal was the right move. And I think it showed good judgment to limit it to only one scooter company. That avoided the problem we witnessed in other cities where multiple companies flooded their streets and sidewalks with scooters all at once. But like the city-county task force on disabilities, we weren't part of the mobility collective, nor had input into it. As a result of having fewer perspectives at the table, we believed the rollout was bumpier than it could have been. Lots of new eScooter users were using them on sidewalks and parking them there. As we all know, it's already a challenge to use our sidewalks, given the state of disrepair many of them are in and with the bigger problems of cars parking on them. Spin placed a portion of the burden solving the poorly parked scooter problem on the community instead of doing even more to get out in front of this predictable outcome. While we thought it was a smart innovation to permit scooters to park on the street, it annoyed drivers, it annoyed drivers and they start tossing them onto sidewalks to make space for their cars. It also meant that customers and even Spin staff thought it was acceptable to leave them in bike lanes. Despite these problems, we've seen improvement over the past year. It's not perfect, but the good we've seen come of this program, we believe supports the continuation of the pilot. And that's regardless of who the vendor might be. We are, we are living in a climate crisis. We are experiencing higher levels of injuries and fatalities on our streets. We are living in an affordability crisis and the transportation is often the second highest household cost. Over 20% of Pittsburgh households don't have access to a car. We need fewer people driving and more options to move people in our streets outside of cars. There is safety in numbers and eScooters are helping make that happen. We appreciate that DOMI has been open to experimenting with new ways of getting around. There have been more than a million trips using Spin scooters in the past two years in neighborhoods throughout Pittsburgh and a third replaced car trips. The popularity of these scooters, along with the issue of these ending on our, ending up on our sidewalks, inspired the city to provide corrals. Sorry, can I have 30 more seconds? No?
Oh, no. Yes, thank you though, Scott. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, all right. Our next speaker is Shontay Carter. Shontay? Online? No? Okay. Our next speaker is Jason Foster. Jay, oh, Jason is online. Okay, Jason, can you unmute yourself? Yeah, unmute.
Hello? Can you hear me? Yeah, I can't hear you. I don't have sound.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes. I, we, we can hear you. Thank you, Jason. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yep, I, I live in the Allentown area of Pittsburgh. It's right up behind Mount Washington. And, uh, I don't have a job. I'm looking for one and every job I try to get, they don't want to hear that I'm going to catch a bus because they say it's unreliable. You know, they don't accept that as a acceptable way to get to work. As a poor authority, just, or whatever it's called now. So when I tell, I tell employers I can take a scooter, I have more options. It helps me. And I do, I ride them regularly. There are buses and trolleys that come to my neighborhood, but not on the weekends as much and not really at night. So, yeah, it's helping me get a job. Before, when I was telling them, just a bus. Now I can tell them, you know, I can catch a scooter and stuff. And a lot of people accept that as reliable, so. But that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Thank you. Um, our next speaker is Harvin Park. Harvin? Are you here? Or online? No? Okay. And I'll go through again and read the names of folks that were. So our next speaker is Paul O'Hanlon. Paul, are you online?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Paul. Thanks.
Hi, um, my name's Paul O'Hanlon. Um, I live in, um, Regent Square, Wilkinsburg area. And I'm on the city-county task force on disabilities. There's the Federal Civil Rights Law, Americans with Disabilities Act, that defines accessible, and it doesn't mean convenient. And what DOMI is providing to city residents in the form of this last-mile transit service is something that clearly is not accessible. When DOMI issued its announcement that it was piloting this program, the Task Force on Disabilities sent a letter objecting to the pilot. We said, "From our perspective, a problem was identified, an inaccessible ableist system was developed, solving the problem for the most able, but not for those to whom the last-mile gap is actually the most severe. We're left with no proposed solutions for people with individual circumstances for whom e-scooters are not a safe, acceptable, accessible, and appropriate transportation solution. But once again, we are asked to accept a system designed to be inaccessible, and then, as usually happens, have the burden shift to us to find ways to retrofit or modify that system and find the funds to make that possible." We urge the city, we said this two years ago, we urge the city to invite people with disabilities and accessibility experts to become part of the Pittsburgh Mobility Collective and design a truly accessible, last-mile service. Nothing has been done on that requested date. Nothing. Our eyes are totally not on the prize. It's on this e-scooter gadget, and we need to shift back to what's important. The other thing is that DOMI needs to really address how many obstacles it can license on our right-of-way without increasing its management capacity. I want to invite you to consider, if I was there in person in my wheelchair, and I blocked the door exiting the room of City Council for one hour, how would you feel about that? And this is something that you're asking people like me to accept as an everyday possibility on the sidewalk. It's totally unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next speaker, Sarah Fox. Sarah? Is she online? No? Okay. Next speaker, Tiara Collins. Tiara? Thanks.
Hello. My name's Tiara Collins. I live in Crawford Square. Hi, guys. Good afternoon. So, I'm going to make this short and sweet for you guys. I can't ride a spin scooter. I had double-back surgery, so I'll never be able to ride a spin scooter. I don't even know what it does, other than block or driveways, or in the way when I'm renting a car from Enterprise, and I back up and run over one, and damage cars, because that's what I've done with it. We always have to move them. They're always blocking the church driveway as well. I don't care where I'm at, they're always on the sidewalk. I don't have a problem with them, because my kids are in their 20s, they do ride them. But find a way to get people to put them back where they belong. Do it like the bikes. The bikes, when you ride those bikes, you have to lock them back, or they keep charging. Do something where it's not an inconvenience to people. I don't want to say get rid of them, because people do need them. Like the young man who says that's the only transportation for them on the weekends, because we need better transportation, and we've been down here begging y'all to ask y'all to help us with that as well. I'm down here almost every other month asking y'all for something. I'm going to keep coming until I get what I want. So, if you could just figure out a way to make it a happy medium. I'm disabled. I might not look it, but I am. I had double-back surgery. I have a hearing aid. I'm legally blinded, my left eye, so guess what? I ride the bikes, but I'm not going to ride the spin scooter. In fact, I taught my niece, a couple of years back, how to ride those bikes. She's 21 years old, couldn't ride a bike ever in her life. I taught her how to ride a bike with that, in Shinley Park. But I ain't going to go on Shinley Park to ride a scooter, because I can't. I don't even know how to ride one. Haven't ridden one. So, just figure out how to make it a happy medium for us. People need them, that's fine. Like everybody says, most people who ride them are teenagers, college students. I know. I have all those people in my house, or a part of my family. My girls are in their 20s, they ride them all the time. On the weekends, they go meet their friends, they go have drinks or whatever. But the people who are out here who need transportation aren't riding them. I'm not riding them. She's not riding them. There's lots of people not riding them. Just figure out how we can live with a happy medium, because right now, it's not happy. And if I damage another car from Enterprise, I'm sending y'all the bill. Thanks, I'm done.
Thank you, Tiara. Next up, Ziggy Edwards.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you. My name is Ziggy Edwards, and I live in the Run. I'm here to encourage you to drop the spin scooter pilot, which has a lot in common with the duly rejected Mon-Oakland Connector. Both are examples of Pittsburgh city employees showering attention in Pittsburgh's finite resources on shiny, profiteering schemes while ignoring basic needs of the people they say they are serving. I wish I could believe these skewed priorities come from ignorance, but I saw too many right-to-know documents during the six-year battle my neighbors and I fought. Like the MOC, this spin pilot is part of a public-private partnership with blurry boundaries. Staff members have been gliding between working for the city and working for private entities affiliated with Spin. DOMI leadership was in contact with Spin representatives a year before even launching the RFP, and the companies in the Move Pittsburgh Mobility pilot were selected even before the RFP closed. So you can understand why happy PR talk around Spin's data rings hollow, especially when it comes from the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, which is somehow supposed to evaluate the pilot's performance objectively. Move PGH's mid-pilot report on the scooter program contained no acknowledgement of concerns raised by the disability community. Aside from the fact that Spin scooters are in violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act, when they're discarded on sidewalks, as you heard, they block access and create hazardous conditions for a lot of people. The way the program is set up, Spin actually profits from these dangerous conditions because Spin receives revenue from sidewalk parking fines, not the City of Pittsburgh. Yet, the consequences fall to city resources like 311 or even 911, which are already stretched thin. I'm not jaded enough to find that anything short of scandalous. I also have questions about the extensive data collection for micro-mobility projects like this. Many of us can't use these scooters, and some of us won't because of privacy concerns. The spin pilot is a bad idea, but we're not here just to stop a bad idea. In 2019, Pittsburghers for Public Transit helped me and my neighbors across all the MOC-affected communities organize meetings where we identified infrastructure fixes that should be funded instead of the $23 million shuttle road. From those meetings came the "Our Money, Our Solutions" plan, which we sent to City Council as a petition, and I keep asking you guys to adopt or at least respond to this plan, because it's full of good ideas, and you guys have done some of these things, like replacing the Irvine Street sidewalks. There's a troubling trend at DOMI. They start with a product or a transportation tech solution and then seek out a problem to address. This was true about the Mon-Oakland Connector also. Last year, DOMI had another proposed autonomous vehicle shuttle that was considered as a solution, and that's just one example. But when these companies move on or go under, the problems remain. We still have these problems, like, you know... Okay, that's it for me. Thanks. Have a good one.
Thank you, Ziggy. Our next speaker is Chris Sandvig. Chris, are you here? Oh, hi.
Hi, everyone. Chris Sandvig from Morningside. I'm also the Executive Director of Mobilify, Southwestern Pennsylvania. We are a nonprofit working to revitalize transportation by promoting more accessible, less auto-dependent modes of mobility that'll allow, enable diverse communities to thrive. You've heard a lot today, I think, about the problems with the pilot, the issues that we have seen with scooters being left around. I'm not here to refute any of that. In fact, I've seen that myself. And by the way, I'll also say that my bicycle is my primary mode of transportation, followed by the 87, and the 75, and the 71A, and the car is tertiary. I also have not been on a scooter in Pittsburgh, but I haven't been on other places. But I do want to pick on something that I refer to oftentimes as shiny object syndrome, which is what I think, especially in this area, we suffer from in terms of the new technology coming along, and transportation itself is very, falls victim to this all the time. It started out, we all heard this about TNCs, Lyft and Uber. We heard this about micro-transit. We heard this about autonomous vehicles. We've heard this about electric vehicles. I oftentimes, as an advocate for all modes, am fighting against EV advocates as if that's going to solve all of our problems, and it's not. And the reality is here, what I think was missing from these discussions is, what is the problem we're actually trying to solve, and who are we actually trying to reach with this technology? There is no transportation panacea. I have seen what Scott referred to and experienced what Scott referred to in terms of scooters being parked in bike lanes. I've also been forced in the Contrafo Bike Lane in Oakland into oncoming traffic by a 24-foot box truck that was parked in that lane, with the drivers just looking at me like, "Yeah, what do you want me to do about it?" sort of thing. We really need to take back the streets, and especially the curbs and the sidewalks here. If we are serious about moving away from the automobile, which, in my opinion, is the least equitable mode of transportation out there, and the highest burden and most subsidized mode out there, if we are serious about moving away from that, we need to look at all solutions. But we have to understand what the solution frame is, which gets me to the other point here. A lot of what we saw happening, and I've been involved in these discussions going back to my previous career at PCRG, a lot of what we saw with these technologies was a very paternalistic approach to this. This is great, other cities have it, therefore, we need to have it, and we'll figure out how to make it work. It's coming, you'll see, it's going to be great for your neighborhood. In almost every single case, that has not been the case. I am not saying that the people who are using scooters aren't helping us get out of cars. I am also not saying that we're not helping people get to work that otherwise might not be able to because of poor transit service or other reasons. But the reality is, we need to stop taking this scarcity mentality here on these sorts of problems and start to come from a place of, let's grow our pie, and let's start to figure out how we get away from the car in a serious way.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Parker Thomas Allen. Parker?
Hello. Thomas Allen, Lawrenceville. So, I actually am a college student, like I've been hearing so much talk about. And I'll say, I personally find e-scooters to be pretty useless in my day-to-day life for, like, actually getting around for either, like, the expense of the trip, or just like, if I'm going somewhere where it might be unsafe, really, to use a scooter on a road, I'm going to be taking the bus anyway. And then the problem with me getting to that location is more about the, like, frequency of the bus trips, or like, the hours of that bus trip. And I think when students are using spin scooters, they're, like, drunk, and it's late at night, and that's, like, probably the majority of the use case that I actually see it. I don't think students or young people really look towards scooters as, like, something that's cool, or something that's going to be helpful. And Councilman Kraus mentioned trying to, like, considering scooters as part of what might make Pittsburgh seem more attractive to young people. I don't think that scooters are that, and I think that probably other people would agree. I think part of the problem is that they're just bad physically to ride, especially in Pittsburgh. Like, top-heavy, you're standing up, the wheels are small, there's not a lot of cushioning there. I think the, like, bike-share solutions are a lot better. I think pogo is definitely a lot better, even though that has some of its own issues. It's, like, miles ahead of Spin. There's also the, like, where are we supposed to ride these problem. I think the reason why people are riding them on the sidewalk so frequently is because there's not a bike lane accessible, and the road is going to be, like, feel extremely dangerous on a spin scooter, weaving through traffic or whatever. And so that leads to people riding on the sidewalk, and then a whole host of other problems that come along with that. And so if there is a bike lane available, and we can ride the spin scooter on the bike lane, then why wouldn't we just be biking or using, like, a bike-share option? So, I think that where the spin scooters do have a place for helping people, like, get to work or school or place they need to go, that's probably because of, like, the transit frequency not being good enough, or like, the hours not being long enough. So people are forced to use macro-mobility type of options, and if there was better biking infrastructure, then it wouldn't even be a concern at all. I'd also like to say, as Councilwoman Warwick pointed out, the numbers that Spin is talking about, like, with their, like, survey response, and like, the percentage of people that are using these for commutes, I'm really skeptical of those numbers. I was unaware of, like, any survey of Spin users, and I think we should probably look at those numbers, like, carefully.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Tenenbaum. Is he online? Okay. Andrew?
Ah, yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. We can hear you.
Yeah. So my name's Andrew Tenenbaum. I'm a bike commuter living on North Side, and I'd like to encourage the City Council to consider adding more bike infrastructure rather than continuing this program. I wanted to share a personal story about spin scooters in our city. It was November 2021, and I was riding my bike to the convenience store, a route I'd taken many times before. Someone had knocked over a spin scooter and left it in the bike lane. I didn't see it until I crashed into it and fell off my bike, and a bus narrowly missed hitting me. Luckily, a good Samaritan saw the accident. I was in shock and kept trying to get up and falling back down, and he realized I was seriously injured and called an ambulance for me. It turned out that my collarbone was broken, and I had to undergo surgery to have a plate and screws put in. And to make matters worse, I had to stay with my parents for a few months because I couldn't do basic things. I still have the metal in my shoulder and a large scar from the surgery. I've used the scooters, and they can be fun for joyriding, but from my observation, a lot of people riding these are drunk. And I've also observed drunken revelers throwing them into the streets. I really want the City Council to think about the hazard they pose when deciding whether to continue this program. Thanks for listening to me today.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next speaker is Siddharth Jayachandran. Online? No? Okay. We'll come back through those. Next speaker is Will Foy. Will? Online? No? Okay. Our next speaker is Jonathan Chang. Jonathan? No? I do, because of the time. So, actually, let me just quickly ask, can, are we able to contact the people who came or who, to let them know that they can submit written comment? Yeah, we can do that afterwards. Okay. Just to make sure that they're aware, given the time, because I assume a number of folks just had to jump. Okay. Our next speaker is Dan Yablonsky. Dan?
Hello, Council. My name's Dan Yablonsky, and today, I am reading testimony from, with the permission of Cynthia Bennett, who is a blind former Pittsburgh resident who was living here during the scooter pilot. So her testimony begins. "Pittsburgh may not be ready for a safe dockless scooter contract. Without designated parking, vehicles will continue to block sidewalks, which negatively impacts people with disabilities in particular. Also, nonspecific ordinances do not block..." I'm sorry. "Nonspecific ordinances to not block sidewalks may not be clear enough to riders, and I will give two examples. During the pilot, I found scooters blocking sidewalks, particularly around the CMU campus. This was particularly challenging when the obstacles were above the ground and not that my white cane would detect. The vehicles shouldn't be blocking sidewalks regardless, but I mention this as a particularly unsafe form of blocking, and my first example..." Uh... "unsafe form of blocking, and my first example of how the user may have thought they were parking the scooter out of the way. I regularly walked by the corner of Fifth Ave and Moorwood Ave. Its sidewalks are not wide enough for the pedestrian traffic. A scooter was technically parked on the grass, but its handlebars were sticking out over the narrow sidewalk. My cane did not detect them, so I ran into them at about waist level. In my second example, I found one outside my apartment door, literally blocking it. It was actually quite impressive how well the person opened into an alley, parked it, so it was actually impressive how well the person parked it directly in front of my door. My door opened into the alley, so again, maybe the person parking it thought they were parking it in an acceptable location. I also previously lived in Seattle during their dockless bike pilot in 2018 to 2019. So this was a dark, repeat pedestrian experience for me. My experience with dockless bikes were so impactful that I attended some public meetings in Seattle as regulations were developed, and I was not the only concerned blind or disabled advocate. We have several local news stories published on the topic, though I was not directly interviewed as I was preparing to move across the country. When I arrived in Pittsburgh, I incorporated such advocacy into my academic research profession where I have influence, and where many such devices are initially prototyped and tested in public. In response to the dockless pilot, Seattle implemented quarterly parking audits and fines to companies. However, they could be consulted for what worked and what needs to be refined about this form of accountability." So that was public testimony from Cynthia Bennett, who is a blind former Pittsburgh resident who was here during the scooter pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right. Our next speaker is Rahul Ammuthapuri. Ammuthapuri?[1645.11]
block sidewalks may not be clear enough to riders, and I will give two examples. During the pilot, I found scooters blocking sidewalks, particularly around the CMU campus. This was particularly challenging when the obstacles were above the ground and not that my white cane would detect. The vehicles shouldn't be blocking sidewalks regardless, but I mention this as a particularly unsafe form of blocking, and my first example unsafe form of blocking, and my first example of how the user may have thought they were parking the scooter out of the way. I regularly walked by the corner of Fifth Ave and Morewood Ave. Its sidewalks are not wide enough for the pedestrian traffic. A scooter was technically parked on the grass, but its handlebars were sticking out over the narrow sidewalk. My cane did not detect them, so I ran into them at about waist level. In my second example, I found one outside my apartment door, literally blocking it. It was actually quite impressive how well the person opened into an alley, parked it, so it was actually impressive how well the person parked it directly in front of my door. My door opened into the alley, so again, maybe the person parking it thought they were parking it in an acceptable location. I also previously lived in Seattle during their dockless bike pilot in 2018 to 2019. So this was a dark repeat pedestrian experience for me. My experience with dockless bikes were so impactful that I attended some public meetings in Seattle as regulations were developed, and I was not the only concerned blind or disabled advocate. We have several local news stories published on the topic, though I was not directly interviewed as I was preparing to move across the country. When I arrived in Pittsburgh, I incorporated such advocacy into my academic research profession where I have influence, and where many such devices are initially prototyped and tested in public. In response to the dockless pilot, Seattle implemented quarterly parking audits and fines to companies. However, they could be consulted for what worked and what needs to be refined about this form of accountability. So that was public testimony from Cynthia Bennett, who is a blind former Pittsburgh resident who was here during the scooter pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, our next speaker is Rahul Ammuthapuri. Online?
Ah, yes, hello. If a child starts crying, sorry about that, I'm the primary caregiver during the day as for my child. Hello, my name is Rahul Ammuthapuri, and I live in Morningside. I'm here today to ask the council and DOMI to work on real transit solutions, and by real, I mean those that are not dependent on a for-profit company deploying e-scooters. And I say this because the evidence around shared, e-scooters is at best mixed when seen from an environmental, economic, and societal benefits, including on whether e-scooters increase access to public transit by serving as a first and last mile option. At a time when PRT is cutting back on trips, I would be interested on Spin and DOMI making data available to determine how Spin trips have interacted with changes in transit ridership and schedule changes. For context, PRT has cut down on the frequency of 87M to once an hour, which means that I have fewer options to get around. For me personally, as I said, with a two-month-old baby, Spin is not a solution that I can utilize to connect to other routes that run more frequently. I would also like additional analysis to see if Spin usage rather points to neighborhoods that need additional investments for improving transit access by putting in bus shelters, repairing sidewalks, and making other such improvements. Given that the Argonne County DHS is piloting a low-income fare payment program, I believe it is time for DOMI to start determining what can be done to support that program so that a more sustainable solution is created for those in need and one that is not dependent on for-profit companies. Thank you.
Thank you, Rahul. Our next speaker is Gail Block. Is Gail online? No? Okay. Our next speaker is Hunter. Just Hunter? Online? No? Okay. Our next speaker is Michelle McMillan. Michelle? No? Our next speaker is Tiffany Talton. I believe Tiffany's online? Yep.
Oh, hi. Hi, my name's Tiffany Talton. I'm a resident of Hazelwood. I don't identify as a disabled person or a low-income person, but I am a person that doesn't drive, and I am a person who's not particularly adventurous in a way that you'll see me going down the street in a scooter, especially along Second Avenue, which I view as a death trap. Hazelwood's very hilly. I would not ride a scooter here either because it is very steep in a lot of places, although I do see people riding scooters here. And so for me, I think it's a mixed bag. I understand that there are people that enjoy the scooters, but I think the reality of the situation is that they are not as helpful as the numbers that are being presented are trying to convince us of. Very few people can actually benefit from them. I'm definitely not one of them. I'm not going to take a child on a scooter. I'm not going to do my groceries on a scooter. I'm not going to ride down a super steep hill in Hazelwood or along Second Avenue with 16-wheelers on a scooter. So this is not a mobility solution for me, a person who has never learned to drive a car and who cannot get somewhere unless there is a good bus or an Uber. And so I just want to say that I think that this scooter discussion is really a distraction from what we need to talk about, which is increased public transportation and better sidewalks, so that I can walk down the street and walk on a sidewalk safely and get where I need to go. There are places in Hazelwood that do not have complete sidewalks. There are places here that do not have sidewalks that are very traversable because they are so, in such bad shape, and because there are a lot of cars parked on them, and now I have to deal with scooters being parked on them as well. And I don't care if you can tell me the company's going to pick it up quickly, it's in my way right now when I'm trying to get someplace. And even though I'm not in a wheelchair, I do find them very difficult to move out the way. They are rather heavy, and when there's multiple scooters parked along your sidewalk or just falling over, it can really make walking around the neighborhood very unpleasant and very dangerous, especially if you have a small child with you. And so I just, I think that something needs to be done about the parking of the scooters and how much public support we give to them and how much public energy we spend talking about them.
Thank you, Tiffany. Our next speaker is Patrick Weeks. Patrick? No? No? Okay. Our next speaker is Roy Blankenship. Roy? Is he online? No? Okay. Our next speaker is Griff Griffin. Griff? Are you here? No? Our next speaker is Chris Banks. Chris? Our next speaker is Brian Kell. Brian? Hi. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Brian Kell. I live in central Lawrenceville. I ride spin scooters actually pretty regularly, probably five or six times a week. I mostly use them to get to work. I work in East Liberty, so I drive, I ride through Bloomfield and Friendship. I first came to Pittsburgh in 2009, fell in love with the city. In 2019, I was transferred to Munich, Germany. I lived there for three years. One of the things that I really enjoyed about Munich, I think it's a great city to live in, was how easy it was to get around the city. Now, this is not just due to scooters, of course. They have lots of different transportation options. They've got streetcars, they've got buses, they've got subways, they've got trains, they've got great bike infrastructure, but they do also have scooters. There's about five or six scooter companies. I learned how to ride the scooters there in Munich, and I would ride them on occasion. And so when I came back to Pittsburgh, I was pleasantly surprised to see that there were scooters here as well, started using them. I never felt the need to have a car in Munich. I feel like Pittsburgh probably isn't to that point yet. I don't have a car, but it would be great to be in a city where it was as easy to get around as Munich. Obviously, scooters are not the whole solution to the problem, but I think it's a, it would be a good thing for Pittsburgh to, you know, invest in public transit in all forms. So I just wanted to give my perspective on it.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Our next speaker is Armin Sami. Online?
Hi, my name's Armin Sami. I'm a resident in Lawrenceville. I'm also the founder of a company called Dash Cam for Your Bike and the Chair of Better Streets Lawrenceville, speaking on my own behalf, but with the context provided by my roles in those organizations. I think more car-free options to get around Pittsburgh is a good thing if it can work, and I think spin scooters are very likely to work, but I'm having trouble trusting the data coming from Spin. So from the presentations earlier, it seemed like there were two separate data streams. One is what Spin presents, and the other is DOMI's independent audit where they go out and look at what's happening. And I didn't see the whole presentation, but I don't think there was any mixing of that data. And so what I'd really like to see is an independent audit of the data that Spin gives. For example, after every trip, you have to take a photo, and they claim that those photos are evaluated by W2 employees, and if you've parked on the sidewalk, you get penalized. Do we have an audit of that data stream? I didn't think we did from, from the presentations earlier, and if we don't, I think we need one, whether that's DOMI or somebody else. I think we need to, excuse me, audit that data. The second thing I'd like to point out is, yes, scooters parked in the bike lanes and on sidewalks are an issue. They seem to have been getting less bad over time. It seems to be improving. The bigger issue, in my opinion, is cars parked on the sidewalk and cars parked in the bike lane. So as Better Streets Lawrenceville, once a month, we go around Lawrenceville and put flyers on cars that are illegally parked on the sidewalk, asking them not to. In general, we get about 80 vehicles parked on the sidewalk on Main Street. On a single street, 80 cars illegally parked on the sidewalk. Those numbers just don't exist with scooters, right? So, so let's not lose sight of what the bigger issue is here, which is there are no consequences to parking a car on a sidewalk. I never see tickets. There's definitely no consequences to parking a car in a bike lane. There seem to be maybe minor consequences for scooters parking in either of these. So more options is good. Let's make sure it's working. Let's audit the data, and let's not forget the much bigger issue, which is two-ton vehicles on our bike lanes and on our sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Armin. Our next speaker is Deborah Cherry. Deborah? Are you here? No? Okay. Our next speaker is Helen Gerhart. She's online? Yep.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
I'm Helen Gerhart. I live in North Point Breeze. I am speaking as a previous commissioner of the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations, which upholds civil rights in the city of Pittsburgh, and as former chair of the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Task Force. In 2019, there was a report released by that task force, and two of the recommendations were about neighborhood accessibility, including addressing persistent accessibility barriers in our neighborhood business districts and appropriate standards and enforcement practices for equal access to accessible sidewalks. Local governments have overlapping and reinforcing responsibilities under the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act. The ADA sets the standards for accessibility and the responsibilities it determines, as part of that, it determines what is inaccessible. The Fair Housing Act focuses on fair housing choice for classes of people protected under the law. Accessibility barriers in our neighborhood business districts are effectively excluding people with disabilities from community activities and amenities. The Fair Housing Act identified lack of equal access to community amenities as an impediment to fair housing choice. Sidewalks are the community's pedestrian arteries, providing access to many basic needs such as healthy food, public accommodations and services, healthcare, social connection, and other critical needs, including connecting to public transit and transit stops. Unemployment and underemployment are also serious and persistent problems for people with disabilities in our region, and the impediments to our public infrastructure have greatly affected their employment opportunities. The conclusion is inescapable that inaccessible neighborhoods and business districts are an impediment to fair housing choice. As participants here today have testified, the Spin Pilot Program has created a whole new category of barriers to sidewalk accessibility. They not only block sidewalks for people who use wheelchairs, they also create a serious risk of falls and serious injuries for people with visual impairments and for people with disabilities who try to move the scooters. Rather than divert public resources toward a private company such as Spin, which is creating more barriers for people with disabilities, the city should be investing in improving and maintaining basic multimodal mobility infrastructure, such as sidewalks, ramps, bus shelters, bike lanes, and infrastructure for bikes, clear signage, and enforcing Fair Housing Act and ADA standards across all areas of our shared civic life. Civic life, thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Our next speaker is, oh.
He links to connect to meeting to speak. So Deborah Cherry just let me know that she heard her name called, but she never received a link.
A link to speak?
At the meeting, the person who you called previous to Helen.
Didn't receive the Zoom.
Yeah.
She didn't receive the Zoom.
Yeah, so one person has said that, another person has just said that they never got connected earlier.
Okay, thank you. But in any case, we will email everybody and let them know that they can record comments or email us comments, so, yeah, so I apologize. And I take responsibility, this is my first, this is my first post-agenda, so, well, in any, in any case, just with the timing and back-to-back, but I did want, just to reiterate, I wanted everyone to hear the post-agenda, and I wanted the folks participating in the post-agenda to hear what folks had to say at the public hearing, and that seemed like the, the best way to do it. At any rate, the next speaker is Nadia Greaser. Hi, Nadia.
My name is Nadia, and I work with students and adolescents and their parents, a huge group that can't use spin scooters. You can't exactly pupose your baby onto your back and then have a grocery bag on each hand on this bottom-heavy, janky mode of transportation. They are not accessible. I mean, I really appreciate that you said you wanted all communities to have access to the scooters, because we can't do that with the scooters. All communities can't access the scooters. People over the weight class, people who can't stand up for very long, people who have mobility aids or visual impairments, people who have kids, people who don't have smartphones. I know that Spin has this long, drawn-out process where you can go, and if you have online access, you can get a card to use the spin scooters, but really, you need a phone. If you don't have a smartphone, you can't access the spin scooters. How many people is that a cutoff for, where if you don't have the money for a smartphone, you just can't use these scooters? So they're not actually a last-mile solution for any of those people. The scooters are a solution maybe for young college kids and tech yuppies, and we're already courting them with so many of the projects we have around the city. I don't think that they need special rides just for them. It doesn't make sense. Yeah, they don't. They just don't. Those people come with cars. We have kids who come in these big SUVs. You have Google and Duolingo workers who come in big SUVs. They are not riding scooters. If they're riding scooters, it's because they can't drive their cars because they are drunk. Or you have tourists who are coming, and they park in a parking lot, and they're like, you know what? I don't want to park in another parking lot. I'm going to take a spin scooter down to the stadium and down to a restaurant, and then we're going to go to the strip. This is great, and it's fun if we're a tourist city, but it's not making things any more accessible for the people that live here. I have middle schoolers who come in to my store. They're really awesome. They want to get around. They need bus passes. They need more buses to and from the places that they go. They can't use the scooters because some of them don't have phones, and they're all too young. So we're not making things more accessible for more vulnerable people. We're just making things increasingly accessible for people who already have every opportunity to get around. It just doesn't make sense. Thank you. And in terms of getting picked up at all hours, they do not. My partner and I park our car constantly to move sidewalk scooters. It's like my own personal crusade. It does nothing. I do it most nights of a week. They beep at you. They are loud, they are heavy, the wheels lock, and you just have to lug this thing. I am not strong. You have to lug it off the sidewalk, you toss it in someone's yard, because homeowners really don't like the scooters. Spin responds to homeowners, but they're not responding to disabled people, they're not responding to people who can't access them. It just doesn't make sense. I've seen them thrown down hills in the parks, I've seen them left in yards, I've seen them left in streets, in bike lanes. They are not a good solution. Nobody in my neighborhood uses them, and they're not in a big way. They're not helping people get within neighborhoods. If we're like a geographically isolated city and you're stuck in your neighborhood, your bus goes through your neighborhood, you can't ride a spin scooter on the highway, you can't get from your neighborhood to another neighborhood, it's not increasing accessibility. It's janky. But that's it.
Yeah, thank you, Nadia. So our next, our next speaker is Brendan Gola. Brendan? Online? Okay.
Hi, how are you?
Good, we hear.
My name is Brendan Gola. I live in Oakland, and I'm a student at the University of Pittsburgh, and I am here in support of spin scooters operating in Pittsburgh. First, I'd like to speak to the use of spin scooters in Oakland. Myself and other students rely on spin scooters for various reasons, including but not limited to transportation in class, work, and private locations. Spin scooters provide transportation for individuals without access to private motor vehicles to locations where public transportation doesn't bring commuters. They provide transportation riders at all times, including late at night when students and other riders may feel unsafe walking around the city alone. Just the other night, I rode a spin scooter home from Hillman, the University of Pittsburgh's library, after an active scooter was boarded in the building. The availability of the scooter brought me to a safe location much faster than walking or public transportation would have enabled. Second, I'd like to address the concerns with riders parking on sidewalks and in unauthorized locations. Spin requires users to provide pictures following each ride proving a scooter was parked in a viable spot. If the image shows otherwise, such as on a sidewalk or at a bus stop, the user will be fined and their account will be in jeopardy. If a user violates Spin's policy three times, their account is banned. Now, in my perspective, most regular spin riders would avoid this after the first violation as active users seek continued use of the scooters. And further, those complaining about the location of this scooter upon parking failed understand that these scooters are quite visible. A simple check of one's surroundings will ensure that individuals will not run into the scooters, just to be sure sidewalks and roads we travel on, potholes, loose objects, and other things blocking walkways and traffic. uh, potholes, loose objects, and other things blocking walkways and transportation ways. Third, I'll speak to the safety precautions already in place in Pittsburgh whilst riding Spin scooters. Bike lanes are the most apparent precaution, and it is obvious the city of Pittsburgh seeks to emphasize their use. This is also tied to the environmental advantages of using electric scooter as it keeps riders out of Ubers and other ride-share vehicles. And lastly, I'd like to mention how Spin actively works to adapt their service to best enable safe use of scooters and safe parking of scooters. Regular Spin implements new features, ensuring Spin users are following the rules and laws in place to ensure the safety of all Pittsburgh residents. The transformation of Spin's service within the past year has greatly improved to meet many of the addressed concerns, and I believe Spin is willing to continue to make the changes to their services to ensure they best serve Pittsburgh as a convenience rather than inconvenience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brendan. Okay, so we're actually going to step back to Joy Door, because she's joined online. Joy?
I'm online. I am sorry about earlier. The advertised start time was approximately 2:30. I had given it about 15 minutes, and I just started like this broken. But anyway, is it okay if I testify at this time?
Yes, yes, go ahead, Joy.
Okay, hello, my name is Joy Door. I'm a resident of the city of Hazelwood, Maryup. Thank you for having us. I'm definitely making sweet and accessible. I am opposed to the current Spin scooter situation because I believe that it blocks sidewalk mobility options, even though it bills itself as a last-mile option for those of our transportations. So some of these are income neighborhoods. They say they clean them up within two hours. But recently, in the past week, Spin scooters have been blocking a lot of the sidewalks in many city neighborhoods, including the West Dock Coast to my house, Johnson Avenue at Gertrude Street, at a time that they were filming the city's roast movie. Many are reporting things like medical treatment mentioned. You mentioned a lot of neighborhoods like Oakland, etc., screw how today's neighborhood with the scooters are all over the cities. When bus stops are blocked, kids can't get to school, people can't access the medical treatment and other things. I read in Spin to remember the needs. We have many individuals that are divorced in Pittsburgh. Please clean up the scooters. There are many accidents with them. And even in Oakland, there's sort of a part of the injuries on a daily basis, by the city's police statistics. They often go so many miles. Please have more infrastructure, such as docks to put them in if you're going to keep them. Have to educate the riders, not riding them on the sidewalks. Wheelchairs can't pass by. People with walkers can't pass by. I feel that they could do a better job of maintaining them you up and see them or go for weeks, blocking sidewalks and streets. They're not safe in any type of way. They're almost heading busy areas. People trying to get treatment at area hospitals. People trying to go to school at work, even in the busy quarters where they're supposed to be. Where it's supposedly the safest state areas around. And those are already tricky areas to navigate. The hospital area by press, be the Fox Clinic in Oakland, for example, might pay heavily under construction. So where you could pass through is there to begin with. Please educate the riders on their proper use. I ain't telling people where to ride safely. More docking stations, piece of last state of infrastructure. They have things that fix sidewalks.
Thank you, Joy. Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Quell. Is Quell here or online? See you. And our final registered speaker is Clara Wyble.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Clara Wyble, and I'm a resident of Squirrel Hill in District 5. Although the scooters are seen as transit solutions, especially for my age group of 20-somethings that often travel across adjacent neighborhoods, I personally have never used one because of safety and the cost. Although anecdotes, I have two short stories to share as to why I oppose the Spin Scooters Pilot Program and further expansion of the scooters. First, on my street, nearly every day, there is a scooter parked on the sidewalk outside of my housing building. Every day, a neighbor up the street who uses an electric mobility chair comes down the street, because that's the way to, you know, enter public life. Although I move the scooter when I see it, and I'm sure others do too, it feels like an undue burden on us citizens. As seen through this example, there is also a trade-off in public space, our sidewalks, and that's negotiated by allowing these scooters to be parked anywhere. As a street space and sidewalk space, these things already being limited, the so-called access provided by the Spin scooters comes at the expense of other people's needs for mobility and transportation access. Second, my other anecdote, after the Bloomfield Parade, I saw a Spin scooter user while on their scooter get hit by a car that was turning onto Liberty. And although the car stopped and bystanders offered help, she refused and got back up and then sped off. So I think that the scooters, I'm not sure if they're equipped with enough safety information and if they offer user protections for these types of issues. Assuming individual risk along with the expensive operation costs, these are obstacles that prevent us as a city from achieving transparent transportation provisions. This program is a public-private partnership in which the city has been uncritically publishing Spin's talking points around their data. In the mid-pilot report on the scooter program, the city of Pittsburgh and Domi did not respond to or name the concerns of the disability community, both around the Spin scooters being in violation of the ADA and the fact that the scooters have regularly been obstructing access for pedestrians and wheelchair users on the sidewalks. Although, sure, these examples to me show that the scooters are not providing for our needs, I would like to see a more robust transit network that all can use regardless of size, age, ability, disability, access to a smartphone, if they're carrying a lot of items, et cetera. The city should pursue real transit solutions that would serve people really in need rather than solutions that are driven by private companies that service comparatively few people. Our overall transit needs are not met by e-scooters. The problems that are framed as being solved by e-scooters would also be solved by improving bus frequency, weekend service, and reliable transit times. Our overall transit needs also include things like capital improvements to bus stops, transit infrastructure, including sidewalks, and the need for transit-oriented development that allows for more affordable housing by quality transit. These transit issues can become transit solutions, and they can be addressed at the city level. Thank you.
Thank you, Clara. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there... So should we just have people come up one by one? So you have one minute if you were not registered.
However, I often, I do want to acknowledge the invisibility of my councilman, which seems like to be a constant thing. The other thing that I see, not issue, but kind of like something that wasn't thought about is this is a pilot program, and it's more of like a Band-Aid to what the real solution is, which is lack of transportation, period. I live in a, excuse me, I live in a community of Homewood. My name is Carlos Thomas. We don't really have too much affordable transportation as far as public transportation, but the Spin scooters also are almost not there. We have, I think, two locations, which is one down in our business district. They do come and pick them up overnight, because I'll often park one in front of my house, and by the morning, it's gone. So when we talk about equity equality and how this program brings, what it's bringing to our community, it's really not bringing what we think it is. The other thing I would like to mention is the fact that there's no governmental, you know, sharing here. My understanding, Domi does not sit on our PRT, any of those PRT conversations, nor does the Spin people. So when we talk, have these conversations about transportation, they're kind of like two separate conversations between county government and city government. Understanding what city government's limitations are and understanding what county government's limitations are, you all aren't talking. It doesn't seem like it to the public, at least. I yield.
Thank you. And please do say your name and neighborhood for the record.
Hi, my name is Avishik. I also registered to speak, but my name wasn't called. My name's Avishik from Wilkinsburg, and I've lived in Pittsburgh for over seven years now. And I've been using public transit as my main option to get around the city. I'm a graduate student at the University of Pittsburgh, and so my student ID also serves as a bus pass, and I'm fortunate enough to not have to pay the bus fare each time. I have several issues with the rollout of Spin scooters in Pittsburgh, concerns that I share with many of the other people here and online. Scooters reinforce many of the systemic inequalities that are present already in this city. There are many mobility needs unaddressed by the city, instead choosing to focus on false solutions for last-mile mobility, like e-scooters. Sidewalk problems, inability to find affordable housing with quality transit, lack of bus shelters and buses slowed down by car traffic. These are just some of the problems that the city should be focused on. Not appeasing this particular demographic with flashy toys that require money and a smartphone to access. Spin scooters exclude by design... I registered to speak. Can I use my three minutes?
There are a number of registration issues.
Yeah, if you register, yeah, go ahead. Can you give me two more minutes?
Spin scooters exclude by design riders under 18, people who are unbanked or without a smartphone, low-income people, people over 220 pounds, people carrying cargo or dependents, people who are not able-bodied or have balance issues, people who live in hills or valleys, residents in communities without safe infrastructure, and older adults. Instead, shared e-scooters mostly provide another transportation choice for those who already have the most options and access. This is frustrating and annoying in a city that keeps privileging the needs of young, already mobile citizens. I'm also concerned about the vast amount of data that Spin scooters are collecting and worry about the surveillance we are all already subject to, who consented to being surveilled by these flashy toys? As a researcher, I think it's a bit ridiculous that you'll spend so much time discussing this survey, which has several glaring issues of sampling and bias. Most importantly, that it leaves out the huge population of people who don't use the scooter for various reasons. It seems you all have fallen for Spin on the issue and are discussing it on their terms. To sum up, I think the city should invest in improving existing transit options, more buses and more routes, improved sidewalks, public bathrooms, more affordable housing, and urban planning decisions that center the most vulnerable populations. Enough appeasing of upwardly mobile creative classes in the city where the priorities are already lopsided to privilege the already privileged. These unprofitable Spin scooters will eventually run out of venture capital funding. Please invest in the residents of the city instead of spending more time and resources falling for Spin.
Thank you.
Hi, I wasn't registered. My name's Kevin Joe. I'm a bus operator for the Port Authority, and I look at it as a safety issue all around. These scooters are parked in our bus stops, which affect people who are in wheelchairs, even walking people to get on my bus. I have scooters all over the place. You know, they're commonly North Avenue and Brighton Road, Benton and Brighton Road. They're always in the bus stop. And there's a lot of wheelchair people. You got a high-rise at North Avenue and Brighton. They use the bus stop. Makes hard turns for us to make. It makes it unsafe for other travelers trying to get around us, because we're trying to avoid scooters in a 40-foot bus. Very difficult. That's all I have to really say, is they're inconvenient for bus operators. And I know that they're trying to get rid of them with the scooters. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the room? I know there's some online. Anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Okay, we've got... Should I just ask the people, like? Okay, yeah, if you could raise your hand if you'd like to speak. I think most everyone's spoken, except for Thea Young and Verna Johnson. Okay, so yeah, let's have Thea. Okay, you're good to go, Thea.
My name is Thea Young. I live in Friendship. I am not able to use a scooter. I would not be able to use it for, given not the count for shopping, and I would be unable to do anything in traffic. I mean, scooters, riders approach me from behind without me knowing it and not indicating that. And if I had stopped down or moved a little to the left, I might have been hit. This also happens with bicyclists as well. I expect as the weather improves that the situation will increase. Also, I've had to move bicycles off my side, sorry, scooters off my sidewalk, which is inconvenient. I think the city should be more concerned with, working with, unhelping PRT, increase the certainty of buses arriving and scheduled, arriving on schedule, and having more shelters seating at the bus stop and providing more accessible transportation to people with disabilities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that exhausts our speakers. I would like to say, so just, I'm going to make a few comments since we got cut off on the post-agenda. But first of all, I want to say thank you both to Domi, Spin, and everybody in the room for coming. This has been a long and difficult conversation, I know. I do want to clarify that intentions are good. I don't want there to be any sense that there's nothing nefarious going on. I just think that this is perhaps, listening to the folks in the room, and keeping in mind that this is the first time that the public has really had a chance to talk about these scooters. And, you know, I hope that from Domi's perspective and Spin's perspective, you can see this was a long time coming. And there are a lot of thoughts and feelings and, you know, information and coming out of this. I know it can be hard to hear, but sometimes, you know, we have to, you know, that's how we get better. That's how we learn, is to sort of self-reflect, right? So I do want to say, so just to kind of go into a few points from my perspective, just looking at the numbers that I've looked at and the extent, I do, I want to also thank Laura Baico, legal aide in my office, and Blake Plavcek in Councilman Coghill's office. They did an enormous amount of work to pull all this together. So thank you very much to them. So as far as ridership, you know, if you look, and I'm basing most of what I have on the first report, right, from, that was released in October of 2022. But, you know, more than 80, according to that report, more than 80% of Spin users are under 34 years old, right, between 18 and 34 years old. And most riders are not, you know, and 36, about 33% of those users rarely use them, and only 6.4% were using them every day. Now, I know that in the report that was released a few days ago, it's unclear, I first became aware of a new report in the TRIB article today. So that was, you know, but I really do encourage a deep, and someone mentioned a third-party audit. I think that would, that is certainly in order. Just because, so for example, the commuting numbers, you know, in the earlier report, it was 21.5% said that they used them for commuting. But the question would be, well, how often, right? Do you, is it, and if it's just a checkbox, as we heard, where you're just checking a box, that could be, well, I used it for commuting once, or do I use it for commuting every day? day? And apparently that has now jumped up to forty-eight percent, but again, how often is this? Because when we look at the cost, and the cost is a huge factor with this service, you know, to go a mile and a half, it costs about, you know, roughly, you know, a little over six dollars to go if you have the one-dollar unlock, et cetera. So, I mean, if you're commuting a mile and a half, that would be, you know, twelve dollars a day. That's a lot of money, right, for commuting, and the twenty-four hour, my understanding for twenty-four hours, you can do that for twenty-six dollars, but that's still a long time, a lot of money. So, you know, I would certainly have questions about how all that actually shakes out. And again, that goes back to a report done based on a survey of the people using the service, right, that is just inherently skewed. So I also, just in terms of the access program, while I do appreciate that there is an access program, you know, the effort is there, but my understanding from emails that we've gotten, also from Director Lucas's report or presentation here, it's about four hundred users, so even with the overall unique user base of a hundred and fifty or so thousand, that's only 2.4%. That's generous, right, because we seemingly have more users now. So that's very few people are actually using this access program. And if you look at the numbers of users, again, based on the previous report, that live within the access zone, it's around seven percent. And again, that is generous, right? That is a very generous calculation. So, yeah, and then, oh, okay, yeah. And so, you know, and also just in terms of what are folks using it for, you know, recreation, dining out, meeting friends, we've heard a lot about this. This is not, this notion of a last-mile mobility, I mean, last-mile mobility is for people who have issues with mobility, right? That's who we're talking about. When we talk about getting from the bus stop to the home, we're not talking about an able-bodied twenty-five-year-old, you know, man or woman. And by the way, the skew, the numbers skew very heavily towards men as well for users on the spin scooters. You know, we're not talking about parents with kids, we're not talking about people with groceries, we're not talking about the elderly, we're not, you know, and these are the folks that need that last-mile service. So when we're talking about last-mile mobility, I think we really need to be, we really need to start with the people that need it, rather than putting a solution and saying, oh, you know, this, because it's not for them, right? Like scooters are not for people who really need last-mile mobility. And the numbers, you know, about, you know, thirty-three percent of the time, they use them to replace car trips. Again, I would be curious about that. Again, it's really about these numbers, right? Like, was that just a button that you click? Like, has a spin scooter ever replaced a car trip? Yes, maybe once, but is that the thirty-three percent? Or is it like everyone is, you know, I mean, these are important things when you are doing a report, right, when you're doing an objective report. And so, you know, and I get it, like, we want to show the shiny side, right? Like, I, you know, I'm doing a program and I want to, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, like, publicize all the tough parts, right? But at the same time, as the city, right, as Domi, as the administration, as us on council, we're really here to ask the tough questions and dig down into, well, what do these numbers really say? And sometimes that means sort of delving into the appendix and whatnot. For the sidewalk accessibility, and I apologize, I just, you know, I'm just kind of going through my thoughts and my notes. Yes, we have cars all over our sidewalks. That's such a terrible problem. It's an awful problem, and, but entering into this, like, what-aboutism as a justification for scooters, right? You know, just saying, well, there's cars on the sidewalk, that's not a justification for having scooters on the sidewalk, right? They are, you know, two separate issues, and they both need to be addressed, but it is not an excuse for the scooters, or like, well, you know, the scooters aren't so bad compared to the cars. The cars are terrible, you know, I concur. Yeah, so the price, and also the accountability for Spin. At the end of the day, there really isn't any, right? Because all of the means of penalizing misuse of the scooters results in more money for Spin, right? Like, if someone is fined, that's a Spin user that's fined, and that money goes to Spin. If 311 is called, there's, I think it's ten cents, I can't remember, but it doesn't go back into, you know, it doesn't go to bus infrastructure, it doesn't go to sidewalks, it goes back into expanding the Spin program and improving the Spin. So it's like, Spin's actually benefiting ultimately from all of the problems, right? Financially benefiting from, and I would really love to see the numbers on how many users have actually been suspended as a percentage of total users. That was not a number, that was in the report. You know, and, so, you know, I mean, and just to put into perspective, if I park in a handicap spot, right, I get a $250 ticket. So is Spin open to a $250 fine every time a scooter is blocking a right-of-way? Because if you're open to that, if you're open to that, which is the same penalty that I face for impeding on the accessibility of a disabled person, you know, then maybe we could talk, but that's a pretty steep penalty from a business perspective, you know, so. But again, these are the questions that we need to be asking, you know, and is Spin interested in that kind of accountability at the end of the day? And, you know, finally, as far as the legislation in Harrisburg, which I don't have any control over, obviously, but it's sort of interesting that the overall scooters are, you know, I guess they're illegal statewide, right? But this pilot program, but, you know, as we heard from our researcher in Zurich, individual scooters, now, that's sort of interesting, because a scooter actually costs about $500, right? You can get your own scooter for $500, which, you know, for a student, for somebody who wants to use scooters, right, a student, a young person, someone who doesn't want to buy a car, you know, that's like a hundred trips on a Spin scooter. That's a hundred trips, 1.5-mile trips, and you got your own scooter, and you're not going to leave your own scooter in the sidewalk, right? You're not going to leave your own scooter, right? So, and that sort of gets rid of all of our issues, at least the ones that I've heard about today. So, again, you know, something to think about. And then, you know, finally, just sort of looking at other cities, you know, like, what's the benefit? Like, I guess, Spin scooters are fun. I don't believe that they are a commuter option. I don't believe that they are something that increases, that they are, quote, "a cause for social justice," as the last, I mean, I think you can see from the audience here that, you know, people coming to speak out against them, they are not a, quote, "cause for social justice." But, you know, what is the benefit for Pittsburgh? You know, in Austin, scooter fees generated over a million dollars for the city of Austin. Not bad, right? In 2022, Chicago stood to earn about four million from permit fees off of its scooter programs. And riders who rent the two-wheel, and the riders, you know, there's a nine percent lease tax as well, right? So that's big money for the city, but we're not seeing that here in Pittsburgh. I think, what was the permit, it was like $150 or something? Yeah. You know, and in other cities, you know, Paris just decided, eighty-nine percent of voters just decided to get rid of them, right? That, yeah, and that's a city with lots of experience, long-term experience with scooters, and so that's how the people felt in that city. So again, you know, and I think that would be part of the third-party audit, right? Like, who, you know, in terms of Pittsburgh. You know, and I'll stop because I know everyone's tired, exhausted, and I'll let our last-standing members speak as well. You know, in a perfect world, we would have every kind of mobility option, fun options, whatever options, whatever we needed to get around town, right, in a perfect world, but, and of course, not every mode of transportation has to be accessible to everyone. That's true, right? But the time, but, you know, we don't live in a perfect world. We have terrible mobility problems in this city, and this solution, which we're spending so much time and effort on, really helps the people who need it the least, you know? And so, I think we really need to be governing by the philosophy of when we take care of our most vulnerable, when we focus on our most vulnerable, that is the thing that improves the quality of life for everyone. And this scooter program is not doing that in any way, shape, or form, right? It is not, it is, in fact, it is leaving, it is harming our most vulnerable. So I'll leave it at that. I'll let other members go ahead. Oh. We do have one more speaker. Yeah, okay, Verna Johnson? Sorry.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Verna, we can hear you.
All right. I just wanted to say that I realize that some people use the scooters and some people will never be able to use them. I wish there was a happy medium, but I'm not sure that there is. My name is Verna Johnson. I live in East Liberty, but it's better known as Lincoln-Livington-Bommar. Scooters can be useful if you can walk and run. A disabled person cannot use them. They are not safe for children, so who are they really for? They lay across the sidewalk right in the way for days. Why does the company that owns these scooters collect them within twenty-four hours? I and others have to leave the sidewalk and walk in the street to go around them, and if I have my rollator, that's kind of inconvenient. People usually leave them not that far away from their homes when they are abandoning them. Select something or use a product to, for everyone around it, so we can all use something. I mean, it's just unfortunate that the rest of the society is left out when it comes to these scooters. I've seen scooters abandoned in lots on their sides and in many other places, wondering, why hasn't this company come and picked them up? I mean, they'd rather penalize the person each day than pick up the product. I just wanted to say also, there are so many practical ways to repurpose the funds for scooters, like affordable housing, bus shelters that we need, quality trends that can be depend upon. The Spin e-scooters do not serve our needs and needs of real transportation issues. Scooters are not safe, and I'm hoping that our city government, our council, will be transparent and accountable in how they come up with a solution after listening to what we've said. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman Grouse. You did a really good job. I know you prepared for this for many, many days, and I think it's good that about only half the speakers showed up today because we'd only be about halfway through, I think, so, you know, let's look on the bright side. So, first of all, Alyssa.
Alyssa.
Alycia?
Alyssa.
Alyssa, okay, Alyssa. This is my main concern, okay? I have two people living in my neighborhood who report to me who are confined to a wheelchair and...
You're violating the law.
What's that?
That is offensive.
What is?
You was, confined to a wheelchair, that's offensive.
Okay, well, I'm sorry about that. I didn't mean to be offensive. Who have to use a wheelchair?
Wheelchair.
Alyssa, let me make my point, please.
This is a tool, not a prison.
Okay, yeah, let me make my point. They report back to me regularly. I tell them, let me know, whether it's a sign, whether it's a construction vehicle, whether it's cars parked up on the sidewalk, and I take it very seriously. This is my number-one concern. When these things are laying on the sidewalks, I get up and move them every time. If I'm riding by, I see one on the sidewalk, I move it, because not only people in wheelchairs, but baby carriages, you name it, I don't want people going out into the street around them to get around. So I hear you on that, and it's my top concern about it. I think the best idea I heard here today was, like the bikes, they have to go back to a port, and then they have to be charged. Then we wouldn't have these laying on our sidewalks and everywhere. And I applaud our director's efforts to bring in any mode of transportation, alternative modes of transportation. I believe it's good in some parts of the city. I believe there's some good things and some bad things. I think we have to reevaluate before we decide to continue or not the pilot, and many of these things, like I said, whether it's making sure they go to a portal where they're not strewn upon our sidewalks and in the middle of the street and in people's yards sometimes, that's the best alternative I can hear. I don't know if that's possible, Jason, we can talk about that, you know, at another time. Nadia, I don't know what janky is, but I think I can figure that out, you know, I believe I know the description, but, you know, you bring up a good point. You know, people who can't afford a smartphone can't afford, can't ride the scooters, and I didn't even think about that until you came in today, so I appreciate that point. Our bus driver, thank you for what you do. PRT, I know, you know, they received criticism by some folks in this room, but for the most part, I think Catherine Kellerman and PRT does a really good job. Can we use increased services? Of course we can. Would we like to see it, you know, run around the clock Saturday and Sunday? Yes. But, you know, I think that for the most part, PRT does a pretty good job. You know, and we were talking earlier yesterday with Jason and, you know, and Spin, and my question was this, you know, does it cost the city of Pittsburgh any money? No, it doesn't. Do we receive any funds? No, we don't. It's not even profitable to Spin. But as I sit here, and we've been here for four or five hours now, we've had at least fifteen people here from the council office alone. We're on the taxpayers' dime here, let's face it. You're paying our salary to be here, so I can make the argument that it does cost the city of Pittsburgh money. It costs us money. We had to have this hearing. I felt it was very important. I'm glad the councilwoman called for it. But to say it doesn't cost us money, it costs us time and money right here. I could be a dozen other things fixing, looking at other problems within my neighborhood, so it does cost us money, there is, and we are liable to a certain degree for anything. We haven't come across that yet, thank goodness, but the minute that there's an accident, the minute somebody does a header who's not wearing a helmet and loses their life or ends up with serious hospital bills, well, the city's going to be a target. Spin, the city, and anybody else they can sue, because that's what the attorneys will do. They need to reimburse their funds. So I'm not here to say I want to eliminate and get rid of Spin. I do believe they serve a purpose in certain parts of the city. I think in my part of the city, I doubt, and we were not able to narrow that down as to, like, how many people use it to commute to work in my part, my district. I would say that percentage is very, very low. It's more about joyriding. They might have a higher percentage of riding it to transportation, that makes sense. So I think we need to reevaluate it. First and foremost, we need to get them off the sidewalks, need to get them off the streets. We can't have them in the way of the buses, we can't have them in the way of people with baby carriages or wheelchairs. That, if we can't solve that problem, then maybe I'll be in the London eighty-nine percent. Was it London?
Paris.
Paris, okay. So that's just my thoughts on it. I sincerely want to thank you all for coming down here. It's really good for me to hear your perspective, and, you know, especially as we move forward and decide whether we're going to continue to pilot or not. So thank you, and thank you for your...
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you, everybody, for all of your comments. I took notes on everything you said. I had a scheduled call that I had to make, but I'm grateful to be able to come back, and you're still here. So I had questions also that I'm going to be looking for answers to that I wasn't able to ask at the Post Agenda section, which is, I think councilmembers' questions were... questions were good and camp, covered a lot of the areas that we wanted to talk about. Um, and what we heard from public testimony too, is that I think it was really elegantly stated that we're, if our goal, like, what are our goals, right? What are our, what are we trying to achieve? And then how do we know where we are? And then how do we measure where we, how we get there? And if we're trying to increase, increase, and I think it was clever of people to say, it's two different things to be talking about equity and accessibility. They're not necessarily always the same thing, right? But if we're trying to increase both of those, and we're decreasing it at, in this, by the same effort, then that's, this is not good enough, right? We need to, we need to make positive motion on, on both ends, and not lose ground where we're trying to gain ground. So we're defeating ourselves. So, I think that gives us a lot to work on. I, I know there were some questions about the contract versus permit, I'm glad that those questions were asked and answered, and so just to reiterate, we were told in the post-agenda section that there was a permit for operations issued. Um, and then council only kind of voted on the pilot program. Um, and so we did a little research, because, you know, there's a lot here that council didn't get to vote on, frankly. Um, and so we were told that, you know, this, it was very specific that, in the answer, that the city has not exchanged any funds. Well, somebody's exchanging funds somewhere. And the whole point of city government is that it's supposed to happen at this table and nowhere else. So I, I, I still have kind of larger questions that I think we should continue to talk about, but what is MovePGH? How did it get created? Who's putting money into it? Why is Domi doing work with MovePGH? We never authorized that. We never had the discussions, we didn't get to weigh the, the, you know, costs and benefits, and, and, and why is it there? And where is it? And how are those payrolls getting paid? Right? Cause it has employees, and so who is funding that? And then, so it's, there's just a lot there that is not okay that we don't know the answers to that, right? And, and, and there may, there's probably questions I haven't even thought of. Um, and that's, that's the work that gets done here at this table, is that we put our, our minds together with our residents, and we, you know, we learn. Um, and we learn which are the important questions to ask. So I still, I, I don't think I'm comfortable, um, with that. I'm glad that people brought up the, um, state law, and I think if I caught it, we talked about how state law was changed to allow this pilot. But I don't think we, we stated clearly enough, it, to my understanding, that state law still prohibits you from having your own scooter, right? And so, it only allows this corporate pilot. And so, that's odd, frankly. Um, so, I still think there's just a lot more discussion, so thank you much, Councilwoman, for opening the discussion, and thank you to everybody for lending us your time, energy, and intellects, and brain cells, and all your different ways to help us kind of learn what's going on here, and, and figure out what the right questions are. We very often say it, and I'll say it once again, especially with technology, as things are changing really quickly, it's really, it's important, like, we get a lot of help from residents, helping us to know kind of what, to keep on top of it, and we, we need to continue looking at it and having those discussions, because the, the goalposts keep changing, and the mediums and modes and data keep changing, so. Um, I will leave it at that. Um, but, so, thank you, it's been, it's been a long day, I really appreciate everybody's time and effort.
Yeah, so I just, I, um, you know, having exhausted all the speakers, I, I will adjourn them, I do want to say there were a number of folks that had to leave for childcare reasons, including Councilwoman Strasburger, Director Lucas, so, you know, just, they, they stuck it out till the bitter end, so, you know, I'm familiar with that feeling. Uh, so, I will adjourn this. Now, thank you so much to everybody truly for coming. This is, you've sat here the whole time, I really, really appreciate it. So, I'll adjourn. And then, just quickly reconvene, and then, so, well, and then we'll just, I'll just adjourn it. Yeah, so, reconvene the post-agenda, reconvene?
We'll need a motion.
Do we need a motion?
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, and then I will now adjourn the post-agenda.